Conversation today, who was I talking to? Janet and John about about using the webinar as opposed to a meeting? And how the attendees on Zoom can't see who else is there? I'll talk to you about it later. And I'm like, I wonder if there's a way to manipulate that. Do you want to pause the recording before the meeting starts?
I don't know, can you?
I think so, yeah.
By clicking that?
Hmm, try it. Try that. Oh, no, it's not gonna. That's interesting, it's not gonna let you. It does when you do a meeting, but I've never, I've never run one on a webinar.
Oh, I see what you're getting at now, there's different things in Zoom.
Right, attendee was, right, because I always did meetings. So you can pause the recording and the attendees can see each other, the host can mute them or not mute them.
Gotcha.
So it's just interesting, we were having a conversation today because I'm not as familiar with this format.
So we got, we got webinar, probably John told you, when people were doing the Zoom bombing. And then webinar is almost like
embrace, right, right.
crash, so that's why we got that. But we could always do a way with it, it's forty bucks a month, that's rough.
For the webinar or for the pro?
For the webinar, because it's, it's, um, yeah, it costs us forty dollars a month.
Oh, interesting.
Is the box on back there? Trying to get the camera to work.
HDMI is plugged in, right?
Yeah. Oh wait, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. There you go. Camera was off. Camera on the laptop, I turned it off because I didn't need it.
No, that's fine, it should be coming off of that camera up there.
When there's an issue that's, he's gonna die. And it's pretty fascinating to think about the issues on both sides. So it's, it's kind of fun.
Be here to finish it through.
That's right. That's right, maybe some progress can be made once you get the dead weight out of here. Yeah, you too, John.
Dan will, Dan will say, who wants to talk? And people will raise their hands and then he'll just.
Yeah, you didn't get voted off the island that easy. Janet, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah.
And one of our, one of our sister organizations. One of our sister organizations is.
Good, how are you?
Good. We made some, or just like a little bit of information to clarify points.
Okay.
Is it okay if I step one out for each of the trustees?
Absolutely, they're, uh, I don't know who's gonna be remote, who's gonna be here. And then I would, I'd suggest PDFs.
Oh, perfect, yeah, we have a PDF.
Guys having internet issues.
I'm not gonna play with this now.
I was looking on our website for something and it came up and then it, and now it's telling me they can't find it, but it's okay, it's not, it's not virgin. Well, I was actually sending an email to Lauren, multitasking, but actually. Well, I have it, nevermind.
First he texted me.
Janet just said she could hear us.
They had the whole board on.
Hi, Lani, how are you?
Hey, Marty.
That's hysterical.
Thank you. Dan, did you get my email?
What about Ernie?
I thought that might be appropriate.
Hi, Lani. How you doing?
Hey, Lani.
Yeah, he has amazing perspective.
His family, what, three generations.
Charlie, when, when did this technological setup go into place? How long have you had this?
So we've had this for a really long time, like I'm gonna say like eight years shortly after Jay got here. We put this in probably maybe a year ago, once we were into.
To the whole COVID thing, right? Yep.
So we put that in there.
So who's the photographer you were at with?
Okay.
It reaches way more people.
And I was like, oh, they know exactly what's going on.
Okay.
But I can watch it on YouTube, so a lot of people can see it.
Right, are you in that subdivision that's just below Adelant?
From when I was living in Australia.
Like right next door where all the mailboxes are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be very exciting.
I knew you were up there, but I wasn't sure exactly where.
And then all the streets have Indian names, Apache, Rapa'ocher, Native American.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I was trying to order the same thing for myself. Adderstock, Backenstock, Monday, January twenty fourth.
Life threatening.
Lauren, how are you adjusting for your first day?
I'm doing all right.
Okay, how's Apollo?
He's great.
He's a happy boy.
He is pretty happy. He got to come visit again yesterday because Sophie took him for a walk and stopped by.
Everybody's quiet, Kathy, I guess that means it's time to start.
You ready?
Sure.
We have enough?
Yeah. No, I saw, I saw you were doing it, you got a lot of questions.
Do we have any trustees on Zoom?
Luis.
Luis, okay.
Nobody else.
Erica's definitely under the weather, so she's not even gonna join us via Zoom.
Hi, everybody.
Luis.
Luis.
Who else is here, Kevin, that's a trustee?
On my laptop, so it's just.
I've got it here.
No, it's okay, I got it, yeah, I just don't have the agenda right in front of me.
You want the agenda?
No, it's okay. Ben gave me, gave me confidence that I can keep it on track.
You got this.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Tonight is a work session, so which means it's kind of a roundtable discussion. We use these meetings to get, dive a little deeper than we do typical regular meetings. This is meeting number two. Our, our first meeting, Community First Carbondale presented their recommendations and we took public comment. I thought it was, it was a great meeting, obviously there's a lot of, a lot of public interest. Since that time, we've received lots of emails. A proposal from a group called Carbondale Forward. I have, as well as many other emails. And so to balance the perspectives, I've asked Carbondale Forward to give a presentation on their information. So it'll work a lot like the last, the last meeting where Carbondale Forward will give a presentation. The board will ask questions of Carbondale Forward. We'll open it up to public comment, so I'll try and get, get a sense of how many people want to speak and that'll, that'll determine how long it makes sense to give people to speak. And then we'll have some discussion and we'll see how the night goes and see how much progress we make. And we'll just play it by ear. With respect to public comment and the general decorum of the meeting, if you do want to make comments when we get to that section, please come to either one of the desks. And I'll, I'll give you more information, but it's important that we're recording the meeting. Some people have trouble hearing, so we want to make sure the sound is amplified, so that's how we'll handle it. Also, I, I think, I don't think it's been too bad on this issue, but, but let's try and avoid an us versus them perspective on this. I think everybody in this room, everybody who's sent emails really has the best intentions in mind, it's just a matter of figuring out what's the right path for Carbondale. So I would really appreciate avoiding that kind of dialogue. Am I missing anything? Last but certainly not least, before we turn over to Carbondale, first, I would like to welcome Lauren Gister, our new town manager.
I just want to say I'm very, very happy to be here and I look forward to meeting and speaking with all of you. And I'm very happy that this is my first meeting because I get the job of really just listening to you and figuring out what's going on. So thank you for that kind welcome and I hope to talk to you individually soon.
Thanks, Lauren. I'm sorry, I forgot to do that before my open, but. Lauren joins us from Chester, Connecticut, a town very similar to Carbondale from what I hear. And Lauren is quite defined, she's, she does her homework and yet she's a great listener, so be ready for a great conversation if you want to engage. And we're lucky to have you, so thanks, Lauren. Okay, without further ado, John or Patrick, do you guys wanna, you can sit at the table right here. So John, I never confirmed, so you guys don't have a PowerPoint?
We don't have a PowerPoint.
Okay, great.
Thanks so much for taking the time to hear from us today and thank you to everybody who corresponded with us over email and helped us get us our information into the packet last minute, I really appreciate that, Dan and Kathy. For those of you who haven't seen our lengthy memorandum to the town, because it was on page thirty seven of the packet, it is available for you at a very easy link, it's carbondaleforward.org. Right at the top of that, there, it says January eighteenth meeting and has our memorandum to the board of trustees. And then just underneath that, there is also a link to three ordinances for other towns that we think are similar to Carbondale as well, for Pagosa Springs, Ridgeway and Salida that I think are worthy to take a look at. And you can find those, carbondaleforward.org. And yeah, I'll let Brittany introduce herself first.
Hi. Thank you Mayor Richardson and trustees for letting us speak today, we really appreciate it. So my name is Brittany and my husband and I first came to Carbondale in 2015 when we were planning our wedding. Our first introduction to the community was staying at a little Airbnb in Missouri Heights and we became close friends with the homeowners and we're still to this day. We ended up buying the house from them a few years later. This was the only way we could afford the house at the time. Since then, we've hosted hundreds of guests and learned a lot about what draws people to Carbondale. Having the income of short-term rentals has provided me the opportunity to be at home with my two children more while continuing to support my family financially. I love this valley and want to maintain the character of this special town for my children, for myself and for all the stakeholders here today. I'm a mother, wife, business owner and employer in this community and I truly believe in what we are proposing today. I ask that you just listen to everyone in the group as I will to you sharing your experiences today. I hope we can come together to find a balance based on the needs of our entire community to both support our workforce and the businesses in our town. Thank you.
And as I said before, my name is John Flack. My husband Patrick and I moved to the valley in 2017, Patrick works for the Roaring Forks School District and I'm an independent producer. We are also property investors, you know, on a very small scale. Patrick and I have a couple of long-term rentals, a medium-term rental and a short-term rental. And so I think we just bring a unique perspective to this year as well. First and foremost, I think everybody in our group wants to start by acknowledging the real struggle of people in the community to attain long-term housing. For those in this room and on Zoom that are struggling to attain long-term housing, we see you and feel for you and, and we want to be part of the solution as well. We feel that the lack of long-term housing options within our community is unacceptable and needs to be addressed. We want to also thank Community First Carbondale for putting so much effort into the long-term housing crisis and for bringing so many people together to discuss solutions. While you'll find in our comments tonight that we don't fully agree with their proposed regulations, we do think it's a great starting point, step one is bringing people together and having discussion about an equitable future for everybody in the community. The long-term housing crisis is not a new problem to Roaring Fork Valley. We've looked back in the Aspen Times and other papers and you start to see people talking about this in the nineteen nineties, so we're about thirty years into this problem, if not more. Carbondale Forward is a grassroots organization that really came together just after the December twenty first trustees meeting. We're a diverse group of residents that care deeply about the members of community and the health of Carbondale. Our members understand that while short-term renters, short-term rentals bring many benefits to the community, there is a limit to the number of rental, short-term rentals that the town can feasibly support. And as we look forward towards our communal future, our town, we hope that our town will embrace a short-term regulation that lists us all up and embraces the challenging landscape, the changing landscape of housing and travel. Lodging trends are changing fast worldwide, you know, as I look around this room, I'm willing to bet that most, if not every single person in this room either has or currently uses short-term rentals in their travel plans. According to recent data, data of lodging trends, short-term rentals have actually increased in nights sold between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty by sixty-seven percents in small and rural markets such as our own. The town of Carbondale seems to recognize the value of and the need for additional lodging within Carbondale proper. The current Unified Development Code mentions lodging thirteen times and includes lodging as a permitted and conditional use for nine of the thirteen zone districts. The town's comprehensive plan, which I understand is being updated now, but the current plan that's available also mentions the need for additional lodging and identifies lodging as an economic driver for tax revenue. Traditional lodging options today in Carbondale are extremely limited, the two hotels in town are far from the downtown core. And at this time, we're approximating that there's only seven traditional lodging rooms available in the downtown core, that'd be from Way Home in the Marble Inn.
I just wanted to touch on some of the benefits of short-term rentals because we really did a deep dive on this and wanted to bring this to everyone's attention. According to the most recent census data, retail trade is the second largest employment factor in the town of Carbondale. In a town under seven thousand residents, this sector is greatly supported by tourists, especially short-term rental guests. I don't know if anyone's noticed, but during peak season, there is not a room to rent in Carbondale, not on an Airbnb, a VRBO, not in any of the hotels or the inns. So we see the intense tourist demand that our town has. Tourism has frankly boomed since COVID. People desire nature and space more than anything now. This demand brings tourist dollars into our restaurants, our bars and our shops and is critical to the small businesses located in our town. These businesses have also felt the increase in real estate prices and need the support of these tourists. At the same time, these businesses need the workforce to support these tourists and we recognize that. It's a double-edged sword and one cannot exist without the other. Short-term rentals contribute to the community, see the Carbondale sales, lodging and the raft attacks. Short-term rentals are not the driving, not driving the real estate price increase and adopting extreme restrictions will not aid in creating affordable houses in our town. According to independent, independent economic research done by Headwaters Economics, I quote, "The pandemic put a torch to US home price appreciation, resulting in gains surpassing those seen even during the headiest years of the housing bubble. And in that hot national market, Colorado stands out as an area that is seeing double-digit gains in home values. Whether it is a second home or someone that is living here temporarily, the prices are frankly gonna go up. There is just more demand than there is supply. We can remove second homes from the short-term rental equation, but this will only mean that people that are afford, that are able to afford an unrented second home will soon be our new Carbondale second homeowners, essentially creating the ghost town effect. Maybe we're missing an opportunity to see second homes as the perfect lodging opportunity. We have a stock of second homes that will not go away as a result of the proposed regulation and a need for more lodging. Although a controversial point, we do believe that most second homes that cannot be rented short-term will simply sit empty due to the flexibility of remote work for middle and upper-income families who have dreamed of living in Colorado. This will result in a tax loss of revenue and tourism for this, for the city of Carbondale. Short-term rentals provide lodging options for larger groups such as people that are coming to Carbondale for weddings, family reunions or events, many of them that are hosted in Carbondale. Hotel rooms are perfect for some types of travelers, but frankly not all. Hence the popularity and extreme growth of this lodging style, short-term rentals. Short-term rentals, unlike hotel chains, are run by locals and benefit the people directly living here in the community. From our research and frankly from forming this group, we do not see any outside investors that own short-term rentals in Carbondale. The only investors are community members. We agree that we would like to prevent future LLCs from moving in, but our data does not show this to be an attractive market for strict investment properties based on the current cost of homes in Carbondale, the nightly predicted rates and the inventory that is currently available. We have studied a, a Community First plan pretty extensively and we wanted to point out some of the issues we are seeing with the plan and some of the pitfalls. First and foremost, we see the most issues with the comparable communities that CFC's plan is mirrored off of. We have heard communities mentioned such as Aspen, Steamboat, Santa Fe, Denver and Boulder. None of these places are remotely comparable to our little town of Carbondale. We are not a resort community, not a sprawling metro and we're not a major Colorado tech hub. We at Carbondale Forward compiled example regulations from the more comparable towns of Salida, Ridgeway and Pagosa Springs for the trustees. We hope you will consider these as better comparisons to drop. An example being Aspen's short-term rental, and we all know the, the lovely fight going on there right now. Aspen's short-term rental market consists of twelve point nine percent of the housing market, whereas Carbondale's ranges from one point six to two point five. We can't really decide on how many current short-term rentals there are because there, there's not a common database to pull from. Another huge issue that we see is the suggestion that primary residences be the only form of short-term rental allowed. This would mean ADUs and frankly, ADUs in Garfield County are a thousand square feet or under, meaning that these are the ideal quote affordable houses due to their size. Short-term rental demand on Carbondale is still high per data that we extracted from AirDNA. AirDNA is a third-party research site that compiles data in various markets across the US. According to this, Carbondale is ranked in the seventy-seventh percentile in demand, a metric calculated by comparing Carbondale's performance to the top two thousand global Airbnb markets. Under CFC's proposal, all second homes and non-primary residences would not be allowed to operate as short-term rentals. We believe this would act as an incentive for homeowners with ADUs to take advantage of the high demand and now lack of supply and convert their ADUs into short-term rentals, thus removing critical, critical quote affordable inventory off the market. Second homes would likely sit empty due to their occasional use by their owners, so we would not have created any new units, just incentivize ADU owners to take advantage of the hole left in the short-term rental market by these new regulations. Again, based on independent economic data, the double-digit increase in real estate appreciation, appreciation in Colorado more and more specifically in Carbondale is driven by the pandemic as the number of short-term rentals in the town of Carbondale has remained flat, if not decreased in the recent years. So I do want to highlight that, that the rentals have remained flat in terms of numbers in the recent years. The average single-family home in Carbondale is now one point one million. That is an estimated mortgage tax insurance payment of forty-five hundred a month. A single-family home would never rent for an affordable amount. Unless we expect landlords to take a significant loss and subsidize the cost. We do not believe that limiting the quote home type of a short-term rental is a positive action for the town to take. Zoning here has not been taken into consideration and it's been pushed to not be considered by CFC. There are various homes that are being short-term rented in the town's core district that are zoned historic, core commercial and commercial transitional and CFC's plan is a blanket across all zoning districts. Under Carbondale's current comprehensive plan, one of the town's goals is to quote, "Establish zoning districts that encourage community-serving retail, restaurants, taverns and lodging in appropriate places to improve the commercial base and augment town's sales tax revenue," end quote. When developing regulations, we need to recognize that the town zoning has a large part to play and stress this be looked at while developing regulations. CFC also proposed to take all spaces in Carbondale off of the major rental platforms. So off of Airbnb, VRBO, booking.com, HomeAway to create a government-managed booking site. This would take incredible resources on the town's part and remove our town from the lodging map on the most popular platforms in the world. Guests would never be able to find this Carbondale-run platform and just book homes outside of town limits or in surrounding areas. Downtown Carbondale has a strong community feel, but there are other areas of Carbondale that have been built to cater to second homeowners. Based on the current development of Carbondale, there is a more fundamental problem, one that here, one that was here before the pandemic and one that will remain after the pandemic, which is an inadequate supply of homes and most importantly, affordable ones. The driving factor of people purchasing a second home in Carbondale is not to short-term rent the home, but to live where they want to recreate and do so more readily now that they can work from anywhere. Pass it to John.
Once we take, took a look at the numbers and what was going on here, we just really found it a struggle to draw a straight line from short-term rental to long-term housing crisis. In our last meeting, we, the town talked about maybe there In our last meeting, the town talked about maybe there were about 35 to 40 active short-term rentals in town. I think Community First Carbondale mentioned a similar number. In the most recent packet, I know there were 68. I think, you know, we want to take time to look at that, but, you know, there are a lot of listings as well that really are people just living in their home that rented out while they're away. But just taking the largest number that we've come up with, which is 68 rentals in Carbondale, and looking at what's happening in Carbondale as far as new residential units, right now we have 400 new residential units either under construction or being built in the next 24 months. So we're looking at, there's approximately 2,200 homes in Carbondale. We're looking at a 17% increase in new housing units in Carbondale in the next 24 months. And if we converted every single short-term rental that there is today, we would be adding only 1%. So if we just really struggled to understand regulating short-term rentals to this extent as a solution to long-term housing. We're requesting that the town move forward with an open registration or permitting system so that everybody, all the residents, can work from a common data set. I think one of the struggles here and what has made this, one of the things that has made this such an emotional issue is the wide range of data that people are working at. You know, just looking at the Facebook comments on this and people talking around town, we're hearing people talk about short-term rentals in the thousands in Carbondale, which obviously doesn't sound realistic if we have only 2,000 homes, but having an open registration system would be very helpful for the town to collect its own information and make decisions based on that. We're recommending, or we would like the town to see, to consider, if the town would like to, sorry about that, if the town would like to cap the number of short-term rentals, we'd like to ask the town to consider looking and using the zoning system in the town to cap per zones. You'll see the regulations that we submitted to you from similar towns like Carbondale have done that. And one of the things that does is it recognizes the value in short-term rentals and what they bring to the town while still putting a limit on them to make sure that we don't get into a situation where they are reducing the long-term housing stock. I think that this is something that the town is open to, but we're also requesting that the town establish a working group of a diverse set of Carbondale residents in order to produce a balanced regulation, and not to just accept a regulation to vote on from a third party that's, you know, comes to this from one side. And I think in closing, I'd just like to say, though, short-term rental, long-term rentals are certainly related, you know, we should not equate the two. Long-term housing crisis in Carbondale and beyond will not and cannot be solved by regulating short-term rentals. Whatever short-term rental regulation is adopted by the town, there will continue to be an immense need to invest time and capital into real and lasting solutions for long-term and affordable housing.
And I just wanted to thank everyone as well for, you know, giving us the opportunity to speak as well. It's an extremely sensitive topic. I understand that, and I hope we can come up with a more balanced solution. The focus is on the real problem at hand, which I believe is affordable housing, while also creating needed regulations around an industry that is really part of the fabric of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Brittany. I appreciate the thought and effort that's gone into all the work you've done, and I appreciate you coming tonight and making your comments. And I think John said something that we probably already have common agreement on, that we can't believe everything we read on social media. How about that? Huh? This is common agreement. Good. All right. Any questions from the board of John and Brittany? Fuck. I'm not seeing any. Thank you, guys, for joining us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a sense by you raising your hand, how many would like to speak tonight? Okay, so a fair amount.
Sign-in sheet?
Fifty?
Attendees?
Okay. All right. Seven are hands? Okay. So this is kind of a first. I haven't had to really manage a lot of, uh... Okay. Okay. Getting some coaching from Heather here. We'll do four and four. We'll start with those who came in person, then we'll go to Zoom. So if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. We'll do our best to keep track of the order of hands, but we can't promise. I don't think we need a sign-in sheet because this looks like a really cooperative group, and we'll just go in in order that is best we can. You could stand if you'd like to, you know, if you really want to go next, you could stand. And I also want to say thank you, Community First Carbondale, for coming. They also provided us a handout, as did Cedar Rose. Thank you, Cedar. That's available. Kevin, I know I said I'd just open it up to public comment, but anything really urgent you want to highlight before we open it up to public comment?
I think the only thing...
If you do, yes, just please come. Kevin and his team have put an enormous amount of effort into this, so I want to give you an opportunity to...
Thank you, yeah. Good evening. For the record, I'm Kevin Reyes. I'm a member of Community First Carbondale. It's good to see everybody tonight. Just for everyone's certification on what we are proposing, you know, we're not proposing a ban on short-term rentals. We don't think that's a viable solution for our community. What we want to do is we want to allow short-term rentals in homes that are occupied by a full-time resident. And we define a full-time resident as someone who lives in the home for at least nine months out of the year. That's a pretty cut-and-dry proposal that we have. City of Denver has done it. San Francisco has done it. Boulder has done it. There's other municipalities that have done this. It creates a nice, easy line to know if you comply or if you don't comply. The regulations we have set forth, the documentation that needs to be provided in order to show that you've been living in town for nine months out of the year, I'm happy to talk about that kind of in more detail, but that's kind of the premise of kind of where we're coming from. So to make it clear, we're not proposing a ban. We're proposing to allow this in homes that are occupied by a full-time resident. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so like I said, we'll do four first. You've had your hand up, so you're welcome to go first. The other thing I would just ask, because there are a lot of people, if somebody said something that, and they said it well, you are free to say, "So-and-so speaks my mind." It'd be great to eliminate redundancy, but I also understand if you got to say it, you got to say it, so. And you're welcome, you guys are sitting down, but you're welcome to use either the kiosk or here.
First, I want to acknowledge...
Say your name.
And if everybody would just state your name, where you're from, you don't have to give us your address, but it gives us some perspective. And then let's try and limit it to two minutes, and if you feel like you need more time than that, please say so. Sorry to interrupt you.
My name is Jess Peterson. This is my wife Nina Peterson. We own the building on Second and Main, the old Creamery, where there's Fat Belly Burgers, Studio Two, my own office, my own architectural office, as well as some short and long-term rentals. First, I want to acknowledge the Carbondale Board and Trustees and the town staff for their efforts. Carbondale is the town that is today thanks to part to your dedicated efforts. Thank you. Considering we're in the process of reviewing the Carbondale Comprehensive Plan update, this is a perfect time to discuss short-term rentals and affordable housing. I am on the Carbondale Historic Preservation Committee, and recently, there has been a lot of discussion as to how to vitalize the historic commercial core. Under the new draft of the Comprehensive Plan, there is a desire to protect our small-town character and history, to provide economic growth, sustainable development, as well as housing. As it is stated in the draft, the HCC, Carbondale's heart and soul, is suffering from the lack of retail demand, and there is a desire for more flexibility in development policies to boost downtown energy. Presently, STRs are playing a very important part to our tourist industry. Tourists are making Carbondale a destination. Our present short-term guests are spending their money along Main Street, 133, the farmer's market, the fair, First Fridays, and many of them want to move here. Growing up here, I never thought this would ever be a possibility. We were always an inexpensive lodging option for Aspen's tourists. The truth is, STRs are providing a good share of the vitality to HCC and community at large. The intent of the zoning in the historic commercial core is to accommodate a variety of complementary commercial services compatible with downtown. Under HCC uses, multifamily dwellings, bed and breakfasts, hotels, boarding houses are permitted. Our property is a mixed-use residential-commercial. We are near the former Dandelion Inn, Harmony Scott, as well as the distillery, all of which are STRs. Because our Main Street location, we are buffered from other residential neighbors. Our closest residential neighbor is separated by a sizable rear yard and parking in addition to the width of an alley. I understand there have been complaints regarding sound from short-term renters in other neighborhoods of higher density and/or areas of infill where side and rear yard setbacks are at a minimum. Another aspect regarding this stretch of Main Street is that there's little demand for retail and commercial space.
Jess, if you could wind your comments down, I appreciate it.
As a commercial building, we are paying higher property taxes, higher insurance rates, and higher loan rates. There are many vacant spaces. As you know, our town is very inexpensive rental-wise, and it's a perfect place to sort of infuse tourists in a direct line to Main Street and all of what that entails. Some of the options here, we need to sort of look at either a lodging tax, maybe possibly a housing authority for Carbondale, maybe enlarging the Picking County Housing Authority to encompass the whole valley, because this is a valley-wide problem. Maybe the housing authority could look at buying up properties around Carbondale, such as the trailer park on Snowmass Ave, turning that into affordable deed-restricted housing or a tiny house community.
Jess, you're way over, and we've read your letter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Nina?
So just to be clear, Jess was born here, and we have had this building for 26 years. It isn't our primary residence. I'm going to edit this because there are some clarities that are said, but this income we have always seen as necessary, not supplemental, to our other jobs. We manage the property ourselves with local contractors for some maintenance, along with our absolutely lovely and trusty housekeeper. We are not an instant-book property, which has got a lot of benefits for the guests and for the town. We know who's living there. We know who's staying there. We are also three commercial, three residential, two of which are short-term. We have been conservative in our rents and have essentially increased them with increases in property taxes. We did convert two of our units in 14 and 16 when our tenants moved out, one of which was at great expense. Our building is 110 years old plus. Jess originally created the one-bedroom out of a mechanic shop, an oil pit with gravel, but the two-bedroom was a pretty funky old residence. This was gutted to the studs, knew everything. We have never had a complaint or violation, only stellar reviews. The building has it been expensive to renovate, and until we began short-termining, we were essentially only covering our expenses. We have two college-age kids and their expenses. Finally, COVID has changed so much for all of us. It looked like our STRs would cancel their bookings and not travel. I took three-month rentals and then two-week rentals to one-month rentals. In 2020, we got to know the digital nomad who travels and works remotely and doesn't have a permanent residence. This continued in 2021. They live and work in our place in Carbondale. They don't live here and work in Aspen or elsewhere. They spend their money right downtown, a short walk out their door. Our STR income also supplements our long-term renter's income. We have not had to increase those rents much and often held off collecting rents because of COVID. Reviewing our 2021 bookings, if our places was each rented by one guest, not the eligible eight guests, and this one guest spent $25 a day in town, the businesses in town would have shared earnings of over $16,000. You can multiply that by two to eight guests, and the minimum there would have been $32,000. This represents vitality. If we want the available commercial properties to be occupied, thriving, and attractive, our town needs tourists. Property values have soared exponentially, exciting investors. This is where our focus should lie. Too much focus is being spent on violations and punishments, and not enough is being spent on positive resources and outcomes. You raise a child based on compliance and punishment, you get a child who looks to dodge pain and find their pleasure at your expense, not the creative individual that they were meant to become. Let's keep Carbondale cool and creative.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
If you guys, if everybody could avoid clapping, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. I understand that you're showing appreciation, but it just changes the tone a little bit. Okay, who's next? Go ahead. Mr. Kessler?
Zane Kessler, Carbondale, Colorado. Thank you all for having me. Good to see you all. I'll just jump into some comments I wrote down, but my wife and I own a short-term rental in town. I work for a regional government based in Glenwood Springs. My wife works for a nonprofit based in Basalt. We bought our home in Carbondale 10 years ago. It was a one-bedroom home on what used to be the Aspen Earth-Moving Industrial Lot, surrounded by chain-link prison fence, and we only bought it because it was cheaper than what we could afford for rent at that time. We spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours improving the home and the lot around it. And those investments of time and, note, we did most of the renovations ourselves because we couldn't afford general contractors or just contractors in general. Those investments of time and sweat did pay off for us, using the home as a short-term rental subsidized our cost of living while we were living in that house. It helped to pay for my wife to go to grad school. It helped to pay off my student loans, and we were able to hold on to that house when we decided to move, when we had a baby. Unfortunately, a one-bedroom with a 20-foot steel spiral staircase wasn't going to work for a kid. So we were able to hold on to it, but only based on the reasonable investment expectation that we would be able to generate revenue off of that house as a rental property. We also use it for family. My mom gets to come to town for a month to six weeks a year to spend time with her grandson. Same with my mother-in-law. I love them both, but having their own place in town and the ability to rent that place for supplemental income when they're not there is important to us. My first point is this: We're not speculators. We're active and committed members of the community. We work hard to be able to afford the high cost of living in this valley, and we want to protect the Carbondale that we know and love. We recognize that the lack of affordable housing in Carbondale is negatively impacting our community, though. I'm sure that most of us in the room have lost friends or people we know in the community that had to move somewhere else to find an affordable living or an affordable place to live. My second point is that the affordable housing crisis is not unique to our community alone. An annual national rent report issued in November found that median rent nationwide had increased by 16.4% from January to October alone, compared with an average of 3.2% increase over the same pre-pandemic period. My final comment is this: None of the decisions you're being asked to make are going to occur in a vacuum. The regulations you put in place, should you choose to do so, are going to have impacts on our community and potentially on working families that are part of this community. We're not opposed to reasonable restrictions or aggressive taxation of short-term rentals. I urge you to find a middle-ground solution that works... I urge you to find a middle-ground solution that works for all of Carbondale and avoid shifting the burden onto residents that are clearly not speculators. It's my belief, and I've seen this in my professional experience and my time in this community, that our community thrives when we work together on issues. Make aggressive investments in affordable housing, tax short-term rentals. Go to the state Capitol and lobby our members to get rid of the real estate transfer tax. There are solutions and aggressive investments in affordable housing, I think, are at the top of that list. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate you all.
Thanks, Zane. We don't want to get rid of the real estate transfer tax. We'd like the ability to. I knew what you meant. Next, two more and then we'll go to Zoom.
Hey, guys. My name is Drew. I'm a renter at 199 Clearwater. I guess I'm getting frustrated because there's a lot of anecdotal stories here. And it seems like half the town is painting this narrative of they fought hard and got. They fought hard to get what they did, and that is fair. I respect that. Renters are in the same boat. The playing field has changed since that time when a lot of people first got here. So to keep this more productive, I want to try and move away from these anecdotal stories because I could sit here and preach just as well as anyone. And really just paint the question, is Carbondale for tourists who want to come and play and spend $25 a day at a restaurant that can't open on Mondays because they don't have employees? Or do we want to focus on the workers, the renters, and those who are going to invest in the community of Carbondale as well as pay income tax and rent and purchase their food here and then spend that $25 a day? Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Okay, one more and then we'll move to Zoom. Either way, just, there was somebody behind you, but it's okay. No, just. Okay. Somebody, please go. Thank you.
Don't worry, I've got my pages, but I wrote them really big. Okay. First of all, looking at this, thank you.
If you could just give us your name and tell us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, I'll start with this side. Of course, my glasses are foggy, so. My name is Kat Leibluk. I've lived in Carbondale for 30 years. I'm from Los Angeles and I love living here. It was a dream. I live in the Crystal River subdivision, so I don't live downtown. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood with kids and families that have all pretty much lived on the same block for 30 years. I turned my garage into a studio. My partner and I did it. We did all the work. It, my kids grew up here. They're born and raised and they moved out. And so I thought, well, that will help with some income. My boyfriend or my partner was sick, so I was pretty much putting, it was all on me and I wanted to remain here. Now, I bought it a long time ago, so I bought it 29 years ago when it was like $200,000, which to me was a fortune. But I put my kids through school. Okay, back to the paper. Okay, so I pay property taxes. One of the things people keep saying is they don't, they can't regulate or they don't. So I'm sorry. Requiring permits. I have a permit and I pay taxes, hospitality and lodging taxes. They come either straight from Airbnb or Airbnb. You don't have to get a permit if they pay them, but there are a lot of other, you know, VRBO, Airbnb, and now they're popping up everywhere. But when I first opened mine, the town contacted me and asked if they could rent my Airbnb. And I said, sure. And they said, well, we don't see you on here, so they kind of tricked me, but I didn't know. It was all very new back then. So I was like, oh, yeah, I'm all in for that. Hey, so, okay. So I pay the income taxes and it's remained or allowed me to remain living in Carbondale. I use the money for property taxes. I always update my home. I live on Hendricks and Greystone and there's flowers and it's beautiful and people just love it and kids paint rocks and yada, yada. I put new windows in there. I use Sierra Pacific. They grow their own trees. I put in an energy-saving furnace. I put new siding on this year and I'm going to go for solar. So I'm trying to do what we want to do for Carbondale. That was our long-term plan as town mothers and people that have lived here for a long time. You know, I've always rented with a good versus greed mentality. It's just a little studio with a little, with a beautiful view of Mount Sopris. I tell people and I have open space early. If they want to come early, they can. There's 10, you know, checking in, checking out. If it's not rented, I say, do you want to, if you can stay, stay for free. It's on me. Just enjoy it. I have bikes that I provide for them to ride into town. I interview them because of my neighbors. You know, I want to know what they're doing. I want to see if we're compatible. I interview because you're my neighbors and you're my community. So, you know, I have rules and I ask, I only rent to vaccinated people, but it's my choice, you know, because of my neighbors. I also make them recycle and that's my choice. I rent for three days or three months. I just ask people and we try and just work it. Most of the people that stay for longer periods and with COVID, again, the same thing with COVID, when it first hit, lots of cancellations and it was fine, you know? It is what it is. But anyway, so most of the one-to-three-month renters are people working in the community. They spend money here and they're amazing people. It's changed my life and my neighbors actually really like it as well because of the people. I'm a super host. I have 179 five-star reviews and a little one-bedroom studio with no stove or oven. I need the income to live and I love the hospitality industry, which I've worked in for over 50 years. I sell wine and spirits to all the restaurants in the Cristores and the Roaring Fork Valley. A lot of my renters and people that come for the Five Point Film Fest, Compassion Fest, other community events, they ski, they hike. They have grandchildren that they visit or just a weekend getaway from the city. So they come here for the same reason why we all moved here, because we love where we live. I, you know, I take, I offer a 40% discount.
Kat, please, please wind up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did get, that's just me.
Okay.
Sorry. I get excited. So I ask them, I'm not trying to be aggressive or anything.
No, I know. I just, we definitely get the point that your renters love to be there.
Okay, so I ask them what their needs are and see if they're compatible. I offer a 40% discount for monthly guests because the town takes, they don't take taxes on people that have, that rent for 30 days, over 30 days. So I figure, you know, it's a win-win for them, so I give them a fair discount. It's approximately $2,000 a month for those guests with the cleaning and everything.
Kat, I'm sorry. I wasn't more clear. I need you to, I need you to end your comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was that long. Okay, so I was just going to say, I agree that we need short-term, that we, short-term renters need to be grandfathered in on the new proposition. On here, it does say that it says raising, raising expenses on people if they have, what is it, raising taxes. I don't think raising taxes is just going to make us raise our money for the people that come and visit. I have not raised my rates since I started.
Thank you, Kat.
And just.
Thank you, Kat.
Can I speak?
Kat, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Okay.
I appreciate your.
Well, anyway, I just don't, you know, we have other environmental impacts as well. We need, we have water issues. We have land issues.
Thank you, Kat.
This don't change my life.
Okay.
We are going to jump to Zoom and it looks like William Brown is first. You guys hear me?
You can.
Good evening. My name is William Brown. I live and work here in Carbondale. I'm a member of the Aspen Jewish Congregation and as such, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Mountain Voices Project. Mountain Voices Project is a broad-based organization representing 26 educational nonprofit and faith-based institutions across the valley, many located right here in Carbondale. We are the people who teach the children of this town. We clean its spaces. We care for its sick. And yet so many of us struggle to find housing that we can afford. This is not just an infrastructural problem. It is a moral dilemma. My life is acutely restricted by the prohibitive costs of housing here, exacerbated by unnecessary limiting of supply by unregulated short-term rentals. I, like many others, live in employee housing. Employee housing is a non-solution that puts a roof over my head in the immediate, but at the cost of being underpaid and tethered as a practical matter to my workplace, not truly free to seek out new opportunities professionally or socially. I live with the fear that, God forbid, I should be out of work for some reason. I'd also be out of my house facing two crises at once and in a town where I could hardly find, much less afford, a place to live. MVP supports, at least, the proposal by Community First Carbondale, and we urge this board to take the steps necessary to increase the amount of housing available to our working population through reasonable regulation and restriction of short-term rentals. MVP intends to work with other groups to ensure that regulation is put in place, either by the trustees acting on the wishes of the community or by going to the ballot and getting out the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Next up is Harmony Scott.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, okay. Thank you so much for offering this platform and the tech ability to come in. I'm on vacation and not able to join. So I just want to say that I know that anecdotes, maybe some people don't want to know anecdotes, but I feel like the way this issue was framed is that there was maybe people from outside the community speculating in our community. And I think it's important that I really respect and understand from a personal standpoint how difficult it is to live in this valley, to afford rent. I myself was one of those people. I grew up in the valley for 48 years. I purchased my property on Second and Main in 2001. And I've been a business owner for over 20 years in Carbondale. And I've employed locals. I have been a part, supported all the local nonprofits that walk in my door, which is, some months was more than customers, honestly. And I really feel, I love this community. I love the art. I love the vitality. I love the, that there is all levels and diversity in our community, and I think that that's worthy of protecting. So I really, I really want to come to this with solutions and coming together and finding a way forward. I think that if we just paint the SDRs as the devil or something to focus on, we're losing sight of what's really going on here, which is the down-valley avalanche of prices and pressure on our housing supply. And I just want to say that I did retire and close my business, retired from my business. I'm still working. I've just transitioned to doing online work to have more freedom, to be with my husband in Spain. And my intention is to move back to Carbondale. I transitioned my building in October, November of this past year to a short-term rental. And I do pay commercial taxes on my building. And I have lived with my business. The only way I was able to stay in Carbondale was by living in a tiny space in the back, living with my employees and customers for 20 years. I have never had to have my mother stay over, never been able to have a friend stay over. This is, and converting my house to an actual house felt like an incredible blessing that I could only afford by short-term renting it. Because let's be honest, my taxes are over $12,000 a year on a 1,300-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath house. So that means $500 a bedroom just for taxes. That's before mortgage, insurance, utilities, repairs, anything. So this is never, my property is never going to be an affordable long-term rental. It just isn't. The only person that could really afford it would be a real estate agent or a pot shop. Yes, I could go back to commercial, but after 20 years, I would like to use my house. I would like to move back to Carbondale in two years when my partner, he's a Spanish citizen and we're going through the visa process. But in the meantime, I'm living in Spain with him and I'm short-term renting in the meantime. And because of the location.
Please wind your comments down, Harmony.
Okay, thank you. I have a lot of solutions that I'm really interested in. I think that we should be taxed, registered, licensed, and inspected. And I think that that money above cost should go to affordable housing to be able to provide for people in the community. And I really feel like we need to stop focusing on the distraction of short-term rental, which is really not a huge percentage of the housing, and focus on what we can do together to.
Thank you, Harmony.
Okay, thank you for giving me the space.
All right, thank you. All right, Hunt. Hunt Walker. Hunt, are you there?
Can you guys hear me now?
We can.
Okay, my name is Hunt Walker. I've been a 50-year resident of the Roaring Fork Valley. 32 of those years have been in Carbondale and 18 years have been in Snowmass Village. I'm an Airbnb host and I rent out a room when I'm living in my house and I rent out my whole house when I'm on vacation. The Airbnb income allows, allows me to supplement my retirement income and continue to live in Carbondale. Without it, I might have to sell and downsize or move somewhere else. I'm acutely aware of the employee housing issue, not only in Carbondale, but the whole valley. I'm currently in Ecuador visiting my children who moved here 10 years ago in part because they couldn't afford to live in the valley where they were born and raised. I've also been a beneficiary of employee housing. This whole employee housing part of problem started up valley 30 and 50 years ago. And in 1994, I worked, I worked for the town of Snowmass Village at the time and I couldn't afford to buy a free-market unit up there. I was lucky enough to get, to own a deed, win the lottery and win a deed-restricted unit up there and I moved back down valley in 2005. I wish I had a solution for the, for the affordable housing problem in Carbondale. As Dan mentioned earlier, I wish we could pass a RET because then you could actually build some deed-restricted housing. The real cause of the lack of affordable housing in Carbondale, just like it's been for years up valley, is the high cost of real estate and the subsequent high cost of rentals. Short-term rentals are really not the problem. Very few of the short-term rentals that you see on that list of 68 are going to convert to short-term, are going to convert to long-term. And those that do, the rents will be very high and not affordable for the average worker, let alone the mid-level worker. Thank you.
Thanks, Hunt. Okay, one more Zoom and then we'll go back. So be ready, whoever wants to come up and speak after James McGuire. Hi, James.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. My name is James McGuire. I've lived in the valley for 20 years, most of which have been spent in Carbondale. I've worked at Crystal River Spas for over 10 years and the founder of Sopris Bookkeeping and Sopris Property Management. And now I work for River Valley Ranch doing their accounting. I also own a property in Carbondale, which I rent out a bedroom, short-term. I am not an outside investor looking to profit from short-term rentals. I worked tirelessly for years to save enough money to purchase my property in Carbondale. I've also spent some time researching the local short-term rental market and reaching out to other hosts in town. At least 20 of the 40 that I have contacted are locals. Some, some of them have been here for decades. From my research, the idea that outside investors are buying up properties in Carbondale to short-term rental them seems baseless. Though we don't have an official number, there seems to be 40 to 50 short-term rentals in Carbondale property. Other statistical data shows that we have over 2,500 residential units available. That would make short-term rental market less than 2% of the overall available units. On the flip side, the town supposedly has close to 400 new units being built or planned to be built. Building more units and some with deed restrictions seems to, seems like a more effective resolution to the lack of housing than attempting to shut down 40 or 2% of the short-term rental units. As well, the proposed ordinance suggests we limit short-term rentals to primary residences. That means the owner would have to live in the unit, limiting what would be available for rent to an ADU or a bedroom. Since ADUs and bedrooms are the affordable housing, this would contradict the mission of creating affordable housing units for the long-term workforce. It seems to me that it would be more sensible to allow property owners to rent out their entire house since the average rental price for, for an entire house would be likely unaffordable to the workforce we are trying to accommodate. The proposed ordinance would restrict property owners to one unit per permit. This is strict enough to limit SDRs. As well, we are filling, short-term rental owners or hosts are filling the gap of the lack of housing in Carbondale. And the quality. The, and the quality of lodging that tourists expect in a community which is regularly listed as the top ten places to visit in the US. We bring much needed tourist dollars to the downtown business, downtown businesses and provide sales and lodging tax to the town. I am for fair and reasonable licensing and permitting. In that light, I would ask that the primary residence clause be removed from the ordinance. I would also ask that existing hosts with sales tax and lodging licenses be exempt from the one year limit before being able to apply for a permit.
If you could wind your comments down, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I have two more sentences. Or, so, we have months worth of bookings for visitors and imposing this limitation on existing hosts with less than one year of ownership would ruin many families' vacations. They chose Carbondale to vacation and I don't think we should cancel their existing lodging plans. In closing, I agree we have a housing problem in this valley. I just do not agree that targeting short term rentals is an effective solutions. Short term rentals are only two percent of the properties in Carbondale. The bigger problem comes from the forces of the housing market. Thank you.
Thank you, James. All right, somebody, Cedar.
Okay, well, Dan, I, I had called and was told I had three minutes, so I hope I don't get voted off the island.
Trust me, everybody who's spoken has taken three minutes, so.
My name is Cedar Rose Gilbert. I live on Went Boulevard. And I'm also representing Teddy Burlingham, who also lives on Went Boulevard. And I want to share some information about our little slice of life. Both Teddy and I each have owned a unit at the Mount Sopris Park condominiums for more than twenty years. Of our units, we have eleven that are owner occupied. Of those, the majority have been owned for ten years or more. We have five units that are currently rentals, one of them being an STR. We are a tight community with long time caring relationships, but also we have very tight living quarters. So what is happening in one unit is directly affecting the neighboring units. The STR unit currently in our complex has had a significant negative impact on the quality of life for those that live within our tight surroundings. It has been chaotic and disruptive, which is inherent to the practice of short term rentals and not a fit for our complex. Short term rentals only benefit the unit owners and has such a detrimental impact on the residing residents. We need guardrails to protect our quality of life, not only within our complex, but within our Carbondale community as a whole. While our documents have been updated over the years, our declaration has nothing stated in it regarding the practice of STRs. Our documents have restrictions that could eliminate the quote, business, unquote, but our hands are tied as STRs are considered a residential rental. STRs are in fact business benefiting the owners with high traffic and activities not normal within a residential community. To prohibit STRs in our condo complex requires a super majority to change our declaration. While we have a majority of residents that want to ban STRs, our hands are tied primarily to a few homeowners that are not even, not even residing on site. Additionally, we are concerned about further development of STRs, particularly within our community, damaging the quality of life and limiting the town community of much needed long term housing. If the town is going to continue to allow STRs, please consider, one, establishing that any STR within the town of Carbondale is considered a business. Given that the town is re, licensing and taxing STRs as a business, let's call it what it is. And two, that if an STR is to be licensed by the town and, and is within an HOA, that the HOA documents must allow for STRs. If there are no provisions in the documents, that the town must require a super majority of the homeowners to approve the activity of STRs within the HO, HOA community prior to the town licensing. We have been so fortunate to live within the town of Carbondale. And we ask you to please set up regulations to preserve our quality of life, the quality of our town and take care of the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cedar. Next.
Hello, my name is Abby Zlatnik. I am a local. I live in Carbondale. I am both an employee as well as a business owner in the Roaring Fork Valley. It seems to me that everyone in this room has agreed tonight that affordable housing is an issue. And one thing that was also mentioned throughout the night is that this has been an issue for the past thirty years. And so I'm excited that we're here tonight with the potential to talk about the next thirty years. And it seems as though, again, the short term rentals currently occupy a smaller amount of, like the numbers were only forty or fifty. But I do think, it was recently mentioned that Carbondale is one of the top ten towns to visit. And so I think we should also be anticipating how a fact like that might impact our future as the town of Carbondale. So I do support community first, Carbondale, and thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Thanks for keeping it brief, too. Next.
My name is Damon Crocker. I want to thank the board and I want to thank Community First Carbondale for bringing this topic to our discussion. It's, it's great to be talking about affordable housing. I personally have a short term rental and I also own a long term rental here in Carbondale. I don't think Community First Carbondale's proposal addresses the problem of affordable housing. And to keep my comments short, I'd like to thank Brittany. She said everything I wanted to say. So I completely support Carbondale Forward. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Damon. Okay, one more, Brett. And then we'll move back to Zoom after Brett. So Lynn, you're, you're on deck.
All right. My name's Brent Moss. I'm, I own a house downtown. Yeah, first of all, thank you, Mayor and Trustees, and thank you to Community First Carbondale. I think you guys have good intentions here and everybody here. And thank you, everyone, for participating. I am aligned with and agree with the, with Carbondale Forward. So I won't repeat everything that, that Brittany and, and John said. I think they laid it out really, really well. The website does, too. I'll go ahead and give you a little anecdote here. So I moved here twenty-six years ago. And town has changed a lot. It's, we've seen the billionaires push the millionaires down here, right? And, and our town has become a huge destination and property values have skyrocketed as they've done in other mountain towns, right? And all over the country recently. So personally, for me to make it here, I've, you know, I've, back twenty-six years ago, I was working two jobs, double shifts all the time. And in the, about year two thousand, we were able to, my girlfriend, wife now, we were able to get a house in this town. Junkie house, fallen down, but we, we grinded, right? We, we did it and we, we were able to upgrade in two thousand and eight. Did the same thing, worked on that ourselves, put in a lot of time, sacrificing and, and working on that to, to make it here in this town. That's what it's taken me. I'm not, I'm not, I, yeah, anyway, so that's what it's just taken. It's just really getting after it and I, I, you know, these days with housing prices, I don't know how you do it now. I don't know if I could repeat that. So in our current house, we've got a, a basement apartment that we're doing short term rental out of. And, you know, we're registered and licensed and paying all the taxes. You know, we made it into the apartment for my, originally for my parents' use, the extra space in our house. It was great. My parents moved out of my house and, and it was their second house. But anyway, so we decided we were going to VRBO it. And Airbnb didn't exist back then. And I think there was like ten of us in town doing it. And then in the meantime, friends and family were able to use it. And that's just awesome, right? It's our house. So we've, and then we did that for a little while and then we rented the locals up until about two years ago. We rented just long term. And then in February twenty twenty, our long term rental moved out, decided to rent it short term again. Here are some of the realities and situations for me personally. The, the rental, the Airbnb rental income of late has been an amazing safety net for us to be able to afford to live here. Yeah, my wife, she can't work because we've got a special needs child that needs attention all the time, right? I'm self-employed freelance photographer. You know, that's a pretty tough way to make a living around here, I must say.
Brent, if you could wind down, I'd appreciate it.
All right. So we've got, the cost of owning a home around here is really expensive. We've got to pay for upgrades and, and, et cetera, okay? So the main points of the Carbondale Forward that I wanted to reiterate would be the, yeah, we should look at curb and speculative and investment buying, right? The Californication style, buying up blocks, et cetera. STRs, I think, contribute to this town's vitality, add lodging tax revenue and the sales tax dollars in town. I've talked to the business owners. They know this. The second homes over in RVR, when those owners are gone, they're going to be lights out. And, let's see. But yeah, the, just the, with all the new housing coming in, we've got all these new, new units coming in. How much are they? The, the market rate for them is insane. So solutions, I don't know. I leave it to you guys.
Please wind down, Brett.
Sure. Those are the realities. So yeah, thanks for listening, everyone.
Thanks, Brett. All right, switching back to Zoom. Lynn, and then Alan. Lynn, are you there? Oh, there you go.
I am. Had to wait for the unmute.
Okay.
You guys must be ready for a break by now, I'm sure. I, my name is Lynn Kirchner. I've lived in the same house here in Carbondale since nineteen ninety. I've owned a business and a building at seven one one Main Street since two thousand and six. My background's in human resources, recruiting and bringing workers to our valley since nineteen ninety. I got into real estate and our motto is we help people. I've helped a lot of people in this room. I've helped a lot of people in the valley. The housing rental market has had the same issues since I moved here in nineteen ninety. The only difference is the prices have changed. Carbondale has lost rentals because of sales, owners who couldn't afford not to sell at the highest price they could ever get for their home here. And they've sold and they've left and they've gone elsewhere. The rental shortage, the rental market is not because of short term rentals. It's because of properties being sold for the highest money that people could probably have ever gotten and will continue to get. We are in a high demand area. And it, it's sad to see people leave the valley. I've helped people relocate from Carbondale down to Newcastle, Silt, Battlement Mesa. Yeah, it makes their commute a hell of a lot longer, but for what they can buy into something down there, you can't even think about buying here anymore. And I'd just like to point out that if we have learned anything over the years, you know, the people who have spoken up here this evening, Harmony, good to hear from you. Hindsight is always twenty twenty. You know, we can't thwart change. It doesn't work. Fighting never wins for either side. I think this is an issue bigger than short term rentals. It's an issue of housing, but we can't go back. We are not going to have five hundred dollar a month rentals. At that, those days, I'm sorry for those of you new to the valley and feel that we owe you that opportunity. That opportunity has come and gone, even for those of us who have been here a long time. And there are opportunities, doors open and we just have to make, we have to make right of a good situation and we have to take advantage of it for the town. I pay exorbitant taxes on my building as a commercial building owner in downtown Carbondale. And, you know, we, we do that because we want to be here. We want to be part of the community. And housing is an issue. It's always been an issue. What's the right answer? Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. The, the short term rental industry brings commerce to our community. And I'll tell you what, that's paid a lot of taxes for a lot of us business owners on Main Street. So thank you all for your time. Hang in there. It's seven eleven, a great time to take a break. So thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up is Alan Harvey.
Hi there, Trustees. Thanks for hosting this huge meeting here tonight. Reminds me of the city market meetings way back in two thousand and ten or so. So I, I would, I would just like to, you know, as a former trustee, I, you guys have a, this is actually a big issue and it's an important issue. I, I think that the core question is what are we trying to protect? I, I, from, as someone who lives in a, in a dense neighborhood, not quite as dense as Cedar Rose's building, but, but certainly over in wheel circle is a dense neighborhood. A, 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 a unit, if, if one of the units here was rented out, you know, regularly in a short term way, it would affect the immediate neighbors right around them. It would affect them in a number of ways, both around parking, which is at a premium in this neighborhood, as Marty knows. And in terms of just kind of workers coming in to, to service the homes, the guests, you know, you just, you just never know what you're getting with a guest. You can have a crappy long term renter and you can have a crappy short term renter. And, and then that, that affects the neighbors with short term rentals in a way that, you know, you just keep rolling the dice. I, I think in, in, the other thing I think we're really, need to think forward is there's really think forward about this. This is, this isn't an issue right now. This is the time to be addressing it. Aspen did not address it. And Aspen is a mess now. And I bet Basalt is having more issues than we are just because they're closer to, to the, you know, golden coin up there. But, but Carbondale is in the resort zone. We, we, we are in the middle of, of, you know, a very popular place. We are well visited. So I, I think it's important to, to think about kind of what is this place going to look like in ten years? In ten years, if it's twelve percent of our housing is, is, is taken up with short term rentals, it'll be undoable. You can't undo that. You can, right now, you have a lot of power. And I hope you think about that as you, you go through this. And I encourage you to, to put some real, real regulations in there. I personally like, I personally like the idea of requiring people to live there. I, I don't think, and maybe, if, maybe you can just, just tax the hell out of the ones that were people don't live there. I mean, a hotel pays four times the property taxes that a, a residential short term rental does. So let's, let's, as Cedar Rose said, let's call a business a business and treat it that way. I think zoning is an opportunity. We do have transitional commercials zoning. We do have areas where ADUs are zoned in and I think you can, can do some things around that. But, but I'm just, really, this is, think forward on this because this, this is the time to, to make these decisions. And just on the Aspen thing, yes, twelve percent, half percent of the overall housing is in short term rentals, but that's a lot, much larger percentage of the housing that was formerly rental housing that went to winter seasonal employees and to people who, you know, were just getting started in Aspen. That houses, that, that particular number is in the thirties from what I've heard, talking to a former mayor, Mick Ireland up there. And one final thing with the medium term rental things, I know Carbondale First or Community First Carbondale is proposing some restrict, real restrictions on medium term rentals. You know, we, we have a seasonal market and if someone wants to come in and rent for the winter and it's four months of working at SkiCo, I think that should be an opportunity both for the renter and the owner who's renting it. So that's all I've got. Good luck with this, folks. I know it's a big issue. I'll get some thoughts down on paper, too. That's all I've got. Good luck with this, folks. I know it's a big issue. I'll get some thoughts down on paper to you all as, as you go forward. Good night.
Thanks, Alan. Nikki, welcome.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can.
Um, so I'm gonna give just a short anecdote, um, speaking only on my own behalf. Um, I live in a small complex of eight townhome units on Village Road. Um, because we are small, we really share the value of community. We take care of each other. We share meals, we celebrate holidays, and we watch our children grow up. One of the eight owners is um rents bedrooms in their home as short-term rental. These are my neighbors. They work here, they volunteer here, and they ensure that their guests are respectful of all our homeowner association and our larger community rules. They have a vested interest in our larger community, and they are the perfect short-term home, short-term rental owner. One of the owners lives out of town. In fact, he lives out of the country. His unit is a long-term rental. His tenants have lived here and worked here for more than a decade. The children go to our schools. We have watched the children grow up. They have a vested interest in the community, but the owner does not. The owner has told us that when these tenants move, he might be interested in turning his unit into a short-term rental unit. That would change the nature of our community because short-term renters and out-of-town owners do not care about the community. They care about their rental, but they don't care about community. And so I urge the Board of Trustees to protect our communities and to regulate short-term rentals when the owner does not live on site. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Uh, Ron. Ron, are you there?
I did. I, can you hear me now, Dan?
We can.
Okay, good. I had to hit the unmute button two or three times before it worked. Um, I'm here first representing the senior matters of Carbondale and the Carbondale Age Friendly Communities Initiative. We support the uh Carbondale first position. Um, we want short-term rentals regulated. We know that's not going to solve the long-term housing problem. In point of fact, we all know that nothing is going to solve the long-term housing problem. All we can do about that is nudge it a little bit in one direction or the other. And we'd like to nudge it in the direction of regulating short-term rentals. Carbondale's older people, people over sixty-five are now, we're now twelve and a half percent. And um, we um are more impacted by the rising rents and rising home prices than most other people because older people tend to be on fixed incomes. And of course, fixed incomes aren't rising anywhere nearly as quickly as rents and home prices. And as I said, we know that regulating short-term rentals isn't gonna solve the problem. It's just gonna give it a nudge in one direction. Okay, I now want to go off the record and say something for myself, which is not in any way representing any other organization or individual in Carbondale. Um, hearing Carbondale Forward's presentation reminded me of a quotation from Calvin Coolidge. He said, "The business of business is business." And that's what I'm hearing. I, I was really interested in Brian's story because um he had an apartment in his basement that he put there for his parents. They were long-term renters. I don't know what kind of rent they paid him, but they were long-term residents. Now Brian has gone back to using it as a short-term rental. Why? Why not a long-term rental? Well, we know why. There's more money in short-term rentals. He is showing us exactly what the, the process is that we're concerned about. Long-term units being turned into short-term units. Oh, I'm hearing that today it's only sixty-eight percent, uh sixty-eight units. Well, yeah, as Alan said, so now is the time to act. But also sixty-eight units, um, the number of units for seniors, low-income seniors at Crystal Meadows is sixty-nine units. That's all the units we've got for older people on fixed incomes. So sixty-eight units, sixty-nine units, you know, that's, I agree, it's not a large number, but if we could somehow add a little bit to those sixty-nine units, um, I think that would be a good thing. Okay. Thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you, Ron. All right, um, let's switch back. Let's take four more from the public and then we'll take a break. Does that work for everybody? So those next speakers, you're, uh, if you would, keep it brief. Uh, we definitely are hearing um, that renters like your places and I appreciate that, but um, sweet, shortened to this, to the point is very effective. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Uh, my name is Brian Dans. I am not currently a resident of Carbondale, but I sure would like to be if I could afford it. Um, I currently live in Redstone. I offer a slightly different perspective. I moved to the Roaring Fork Valley only about two months ago. Um, I gratefully got a job, a good job in this area. I moved here from Portland, Maine, a city that has a very similar situation going on right now. Um, but is much larger and is much more heavily dependent on tourism as an industry. Um. I'm hearing a lot of really good stuff from both sides here. I think that there is, uh, sounds like there's a very low number of short-term rental units in the area. And it sounds like people really want to keep people from investing in housing only to create short-term units. I feel like there's actually a lot of agreement there. I think that that's really good. One of the things that I'm also hearing that concerns me is the point about how much tourism is important to Carbondale. How much draw of outside money and not money that is generated by people who live here and who are employed here. So affordable housing is not a thing anymore. I think a lot of us have just had to accept that. I moved here and I took a thirty-one percent pay raise to come here, and I cannot afford a rental here. I'm living in Redstone because I'm able to afford rent there. Um, that doesn't seem right, and it's not about what's right or what's wrong. But I would definitely urge the board here to really be thinking about what's happening for Carbondale and the area in the future when it comes to who are we trying to draw to this area? Why are we trying to draw them to this area? What makes quality people stay in an area? What makes them want to be good community members? And want to afford not necessarily affordable housing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for keeping it brief. Next up. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, good evening. Thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Marco Dane. I live in Glenwood. Me and my wife founded and own and operate Keylink Vacation Rentals. Uh, we have a handful of rentals here in, in and around town. I'd like to thank our competitors who did a fantastic job of outlining uh what vacation rentals really are. Um, every point they made was valid. Uh, very valid, extremely valid, and I'm not gonna reiterate much else of what they said, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to take the mask off so I can breathe, and then I'd like to possibly offer some alternative solutions for regulations. Um, for the nine-three uh proposal, which seems more of a restriction than a regulation, and uh uh, we are really not behind any of this. Um, I was involved in a community-wide discussion in Glenwood Springs. I am the acting chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we just went through a similar exercise a cou- excuse me, a couple of years ago. And uh, our solutions are not the cat's meow. It's not the best, the perfect, but we did come up with some pretty good approaches to regulating short-term rentals. And, and by the way, short-term rentals in our eyes are not the culprit. The developer that's building forty, sixty, seventy units at an exuberant construction cost and then rent them out at high price is the culprit. I'm also involved in affordable housing, how we're gonna create affordable housing, so I know a little bit about that, and it's a very tough, almost as tough as deciding this uh, subject on, on how to move forward with. Um, so the first thing I would like to offer you is I think as a town, you should take a full inventory of your rental units. You should know exactly how many apartments, how many condos, how many single-family homes. Include the deed-restricted ones. Include the affordable housing units. I don't know what you guys' code says about inclusionary housing, but uh, include everything. Have a full count, so you know what you're dealing with. Um, also make sure you include the ownership information on these units, and I'll get to that point a little later.
Not two months later, Mark.
No, I'm, I'm trying. I, I may take my wife's three minutes. No, I'm just kidding. Um, uh, then, uh, I would, I would recommend a cap on short-term rentals. A number works, in my opinion, um, because it tells people, there's this many licenses. If you miss it, you're out. Try again next year. Uh, also, I would recommend that STRs are held in private ownership. Maybe as far as an LLC, a lot of people do an LLC because of liability reasons. Anybody who's in business knows that aspect of it. Um, I would also recommend that any person cannot hold more than two permits for rentals. And that absolutely no corporation should be allowed to run and operate an STR, period. Um, I would also recommend you have a representative available on site within forty-five minutes. Um, I would impose a hefty, hefty in quotes, that's up to you to figure out, five hundred dollars and up, application and renewal fee. Make it official, i- issue uh, uh STR permits um per unit. Um, also, issue business licenses so you can collect sales tax, tax individually based on the property. Then you know what you get from that property every year. And you can also track whether these people are using their STR licenses and actually paying taxes or whether people just grab licenses so somebody else can't.
Mark, if you could wind down, I'd appreciate it.
I will. Little bit of a fail-safe. Then there's a little details um that you need to work out, how many units in multifamily are allowed. Um. Three infractions, three strikes, you're out. Remove the permit if police reports are involved. Uh, if you're not paying taxes, you should lose the two. Uh, in closing, I would also say that the primary, primary residence rule is, like I said, more of a restriction than a regulation, and in our opinion, that creates the ghost town. Because we work for wonderful owners that love to come to Carbondale and enjoy their home for a few months out of the year. And they will not give up their homes for long-term rentals. I can guarantee it. And um, that said, these houses will stay empty. We've heard that a lot. And again, affordable housing, another big elephant that we have to tackle. We're trying in Glenwood. Maybe we should talk together at some point and see what we can do. Thank you for your time.
Go for it, yep.
All right, uh, my name is Ally O'Neill. I live here in Carbondale, and I'm part of Community First Carbondale. Um, thanks for the opportunity to speak again. So we've had a lot of people reach out with questions regarding our proposed regulations. Um, even with the information that we've given, we know it's really dense. Um, and I just wanted to speak to one sentiment that I believe is a misconception. Um, I had the chance to read the memo from Carbondale Forward and saw that we were referred to as a special interest group. Um, my understanding of a special interest group is one that consists of a group of people or organizations that often seeks to receive financial advantages typically through lobbying. Um, I just want to make it really clear, I myself am a renter. We are comprised of a group of people who are either renters or own their own homes. We all live here locally in the community. None of us own a second home or property in any capacity. None of us seek to use real estate as short-term rental properties. None of us work in the short-term rental industry, industry, or financially benefit from it in any manner. Um, basically, our only special interest in this initiative is to prevent our neighbors and community members, and for me, myself, from being displaced from the place that we call home. And on a personal note, um, I believe that we're really at a moment in history where we have the opportunity to consciously move forward with equity and community at the forefront of how we make decisions. I feel that this is really Carbondale's chance um to show who we are and what we value most. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. One more, and then we'll take a break.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, trustees. Uh, my name is Eric Mitchell. I live in Carbondale. Uh, appreciate very much the opportunity of the forum and the ability to be able to hear everybody's opinions uh and perspectives, because it's a long process that we're going through. This is not a problem that's gonna be solved tonight. Uh, the way we do need to start, I believe, as Mark just said, is with some real data. We're, we're pointing fingers at the moon without real numbers here. We need to find out exactly what the short-term rental uh inventory is and what, uh, what the rest of the housing market is. Um, as a local business owner, um, I appreciate very much the fact that uh, we feel the uh, the vitality of visiting dollars. Uh, I also feel the bleed of staff not being able to be here. Um, we're losing uh another couple, a pair uh to over, to move over to uh Peonia, where they can afford to buy a house. Um, we do need to look at this. Uh, I think in my mind, there is, this is a, the, just the latest gold rush in, in one regard. Um, there's a, it's a resource, a, a means for being able to scrabble it out here, which everybody in this valley has done, the, the valley hustle. We've all done it to be able to stay here. I live in Carbondale. I hope to spend the rest of my days in Carbondale. It's not a guarantee. It's not a guarantee for any of us. Um, and that's why we're all here, every single one of us. I'm certain of that. Uh, so I, I, I would ask that we work real hard to find that real data. Uh, I do think that we need to have regulation on short-term rentals. Uh, we just need to understand what we're dealing with. It can't be this, this open well. That's all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate your comments. All right, we are gonna take, uh, let's take a seven-minute break, um, come back at about seven forty-five, and we will move back to Zoom uh at that time. So, thanks, everybody. Okay.
We could get more people that are here to stay first and then go home and film? Just for those that made an effort to come and stay first, personally, do you think?
Pretty well. But, thank you. Yep.
It's a glutenous.
Oh, they are gluten-free.
They're gluten-free. Cheesy, it's too good. Bless. I'm for sure, more.
We're debating which one to get.
Chocolate.
Chocolate.
Like the holiday fare.
Like the holiday fare.
Then it would be easier for us to be able to tell.
So I just. I was just saying, we always, we always doubt whether we're getting word out about what you're doing. People care about. But it's good that. Yeah, it's good. I think it's good. This is what I want every year. I want this to be talked about forever. Yeah, and I didn't want to make it sound like you guys were trapped by their own travel plans. It was just more like, you know, make your street break. And I know that a lot of people, and you know, it's just, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Sorry, I just think. It's tough with early voting, right? Because I want to know if a quarter of people already voted. I looked back on my calendar. Yeah, well, there's also just like.
To let everybody. And then we'll probably just. Talk about like what's next. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we will do that again, for sure. And then I'd imagine Dan will go around and like, what, you know, what would my starting point be? What would mine be?
Yeah.
You know, ready to kind of jump into ordinance. Maybe scratch the surface and like, what would be?
But in terms of like, public.
No, no, I mean, because as soon as we have an ordinance, that has to have, it'll be a funny car. Yep, and then you'd see like, the actual substance.
But it's not necessarily the.
No, no.
If you don't like it.
We're starting to move towards it to be a really, real.
I am defining ineffective control meetings, but.
What?
I'm defining.
Folks, we're getting ready to start again.
Hi, everybody. Let's get back.
That's yummy. Usually they, they're weird. That one's delicious. Good.
Thank you, Sergeant Henry.
Sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, um, it's time to switch back to Zoom. Um, and just so everybody knows, we would love to get to discussion tonight. So um somewhere we're debating, should I stick around or not? We want to give everybody a chance to speak and we will. And if there's time, we'll get into discussion too. So, all right, with that, Rich, take it away.
Thanks. Thank you, the board. I am one of the displaced residents Community First Carbondale talks about and have personal experience with this issue. I have no skin in the game. We do not own any type of rentals. I just want to see Carbondale do an independent evaluation of the issue specific to Carbondale and not take the word of either side. I've been in the valley for fifty years, sixteen of which have been in Carbondale. With twenty years as a property manager, I have seen these issues firsthand. We ended up in Carbondale because we were chased down valley, as many people were, due due to the rising real estate rental costs. I moved to Stone Mass Village in nineteen seventy one. Because of youth, neither my future wife nor I took advantage of the nineteen seventies snowmass prices. After getting married and getting priced out of the real estate market and rental pool, we purchased our first home in Basalt in nineteen eighty four. We decided to purchase in Carbondale in two thousand and five to be mortgage free during our retirement. And it was a great move because we love living in this community. It's the best one in the valley. Recently, reading two newspaper articles grabbed my attention because some of the statements CFC made did not ring true. CFC is naively inferring that STRs are responsible for the town losing long term rentals and displacing employees and residents. Actually, I think it's the other way around. I would contend that the lack of affordable long term housing is the cause of some of the STRs. Being a former Basalt Town trustee, I know the importance of making good, sound choices after a responsible study of issues facing the town. I have aligned myself with Carbondale Forward because CFC has not provided any fundamental data specific to Carbondale to back up their statements. It would be irresponsible of the town to move forward without an independent study. Thanks so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, next up is Clarissa.
Hi there. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Um, hi there. My name is Clarissa Fortier and I've lived in Carbondale for three years. Uh, I want to thank Community First Carbondale for the work that they've done on this issue. And I want to emphasize the fact that each person who has spoken for Carbondale Forward has personal financial gains in not passing the regulations Community First Carbondale is proposing because they themselves profit from short term rentals. I, however, am coming to you as a community member who would simply like to continue to live here. I believe that I'm an asset to this community and I am part of what Carbondale is all about. Is Carbondale a place for tourists and visitors or is it a place for a community? I want to thank, I believe it is Kevin, for asking this question earlier. I am an artist, a nanny, a pet sitter, and I am a teacher at the local elementary school. My current housing is not sustainable and I am exam, an example of the type of person that will relocate to a more affordable town if Carbondale prioritizes STRs and tourism over community and our children and our this wonderful place that we live in. I believe that STRs, while not the only contributing factor to the housing crisis, are a contributing factor. I would like to continue to live here and I would like to continue to raise children and to teach children in the local elementary schools um and be an artist in this community. But I do not see that as possible if I cannot leave my current housing situation. So I want to just reiterate, who is Carbondale for and what do we want to prioritize? And I truly hope that I can continue to live here. But I do see a future where I move because it is no longer an affordable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarissa. All right, looks like we have two more Zoom speakers, uh, and then we'll go back to the uh in person. Kristen and then Sophia.
Hi, are we good on audio?
Yes.
All right. Hi, I'm Kristin Matarra. I've lived in Carbondale for five years now. And um similar to many things said tonight, affordable housing is its own beast. Um, and I think that is a much larger discussion outside of this. Um, STRs might be a contributing factor, but I think based on what we've heard tonight, maybe not as much as other factors within housing markets. Um, so on that, I would say, you know, we've talked, there's been a lot to talk about paying property or paying taxes, and I just want to clarify that there's essentially three different types of tax. There's lodging tax, sales tax, and then the property tax that's being paid, which I don't know where we've landed on ungallaghering things, but there's a difference between what residential pays versus commercial. So whatever solution the town does look at, I would say try to keep that in mind and making it a little bit more equitable in terms of what a commercial property may pay versus what a residential property pays because they're both paying taxes, but they're vastly different. Um, I agree with the zoning consideration, particularly what Pagosa and Ridgway have done. Um, I actually stayed in an Airbnb in Pagosa and it was right next door to the neighbor or the mayor when they had gone through this process, but it was in the commercial core. So I think if we take a look of how are we mixing up our lodging options and maintaining certain zoning requirements, whether it be purely residential versus mixed use or purely commercial so that not not all this is within our neighborhoods. And then um I know Basalt's exploring different ways of tracking the STRs, so an audit of what's out there, um not just what exists and who owns it, but also the zoning of where those properties exist would be helpful for an informed decision. And I appreciate this thoughtful approach that not only the Board of Trustees has done, but both groups that have presented tonight, as well as all the public comment. And going through my list, uh, the, I also appreciate prioritizing owner occupied or local run establishments versus anything that's a much larger offsite operation. And lastly, um, whatever solution that you come to, I also want to make sure we're taking into consideration the staff time required to execute it. Um, as we all know from a workforce standpoint, everyone's stretched really thin. And the only way to be effective is if we have a solution that staff can execute. And if they can't, it's not worth passing all of this code regulations. And with that, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Sophia.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Good evening. Um, my name is Sophia Clark. I was born in the valley and I've lived here for my entire life. I'm in my mid thirties now. Um, and first of all, I just want to remind everyone that we're talking about people here. I heard a suggestion to tear down a trailer park, which has a whole bunch of long term low income residents who are all Latino working here. Um, as well as making this number of sixty eight seem um unimportant. But we're talking about human beings and that's sixty eight families or individuals. Um, I live in a newly constructed affordable housing building on Dolores Way. There are thirty units. That's thirty individuals and families and the waitlist is years and years and years long to get into that building. Um, so every housing, every piece of housing matters. And no one is actually proposing to end short term rentals. Uh, we're proposing to regulate it. Um, I think we all know and agree that there is a larger systemic problem of the cost of living here. But short term rentals do not contribute to a solution. They add to the problem. And there are reasonable solutions that limit that problem without taking it away. Um, and then I just would like to share that I uh I rent and I moved five times in the past three years. I had to move when rent was raised, when units were sold, and when the only thing I could afford uh was a room in a house, which is just not a place to build a life when you're renting a bedroom in someone else's home. Um, so I finally found a unit that was attached to a woman's home that instead of short term renting, she rented to me for a very low price. Um, I could not have found a place to live without her help and there's no one else I know who had rent even close to that. Um, when I finally moved out after getting into this affordable housing unit, um, I posted the unit to Facebook and in a matter of two hours, I had dozens of people reaching out. People who are desperate, people with children, people in their fifties and sixties who've lived through their whole lives with no place to live, teachers, healthcare workers. Um, and all of them were saying, there is nothing like this anywhere. There's nothing like this. You can't find a unit like this. Um, if I had to move out of my current place, I don't know where I would go. I'm a young professional. I have a professional job. I have a decent wage and there's still nothing I could afford in this town. So if I can't, there are many more people who are far more vulnerable. So like others have said, you know, what's the message we're sending? Are we saying that low income people don't matter, that they're disposable to our community? Do we want a town of increasingly wealthy and overwhelmingly white people? Or do we want a diverse town with our workforce being part of the community and where people who've lived here for decades can actually thrive? Um, and my final comment is I just feel very upset hearing people who are homeowners, who are traveling in other countries, talking about this issue when you are not the people facing housing insecurity. Rent has never been as expensive as it is right now since the start of the pandemic, when people are struggling harder than they've ever struggled in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, we will jump back to in person. So Sydney first and then.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sydney Shalit. Um, I am not a Carbondale resident. I live in the grand metropolis of Setank. My husband and I have a house with an ADU and we choose to rent it long term because we really do value the community. We currently have a forest service um and firefighter and then her partner is an engineer. They both work in in Carbondale. Um, I think one of the things that we're hearing a lot about is the fact that we have zero data. We might have data. None of it seems aligned with anybody else's assumptions. Um, so I would also recommend, and second all of what Alan said very eloquently, on let's get our data straight. Let's set regulations in place just so we know where these are and we know what we're dealing with. I think um another opportunity is to look at, again, seconding Alan. Um, if uh someone earlier mentioned that in the nineties, there were ten of these, right? And if we say that the middle number that we've heard tonight is, let's say, forty five currently, that's a big jump in in a burgeoning market. So then we can just imagine that that number in the next ten years is going to be what, right? It could, it could at least double, right? Based on what we're looking at, knowing what is coming in Carbondale's future. Um, I think that the town is at a, is at a precipice to make a decision. As much as we all like to think that Carbondale is the most unique rainbows and unicorns place in the world, it's not. Like, we are in a valley that every other community is going through this. We are in a state where this is on the front page of the Post every other week, right? Crestabute had worker strikes. Like, we just, we have this opportunity to look at all these other ways that it's been done. Take that information, take all this wonderful comment and make a decision based on data and facts. And I think that what we can look at too is have, like, I mean, I know speculation is like the worst word tonight, but really speculate about how, what this growth is going to look like. What do our new, like, what do our new developments look like? What are we asking to set aside in those developments to be affordable? What are we asking to set aside in those developments to be affordable housing? I do think that short-term rentals are businesses. I think they should require business licenses. And again, I mean, I am not patting myself on the back. We, we lowered the rent during the pandemic. It's a really tough time for a lot of people, even those with full-time jobs, right? We lowered the rent, we, we made, we do everything we can to keep our renters, and we've only ever rented long-term, and we will not ever rent short-term, ever. Even if we do move abroad and have some, awesome little retirement party, it's, that's never going to be the part of it, because we really do value the community, even when we disagree with them. We just want people to have a place to live that's safe and comfortable. I would also really like to just note that I bet that any number of us could have a really educated guess on how many, like, art trash cans are around town or doggy poop collection places. The fact that we don't know how many short-term rentals are in our midst is, is kind of comical. Like, we should, let's get a grip on that first and then go to make decisions, because from that number, we can then decide really what it's going to look like, knowing that we've got 400 units coming and that we have a lot of public comment. Thank you all so much. Good luck.
Thank you, Sydney. Who's next?
Hi there. My name is Natalie Spears. I am a resident of Carbondale. I moved here in 2010 to work with Laura Bartels on our straw bale house, and I came just to work for eight months to learn about straw bale, and I fell in love with this community. And since then, I have stepped into my life as a musician, and I am part of the creative fabric of this town, which is what really brings so many tourists here. People come for the beauty of the mountains, but they also come for our creative culture. We're a creative district. We've worked really hard to make that a part of what makes Carbondale unique, what makes it one of the top 10 towns to visit. And I have watched so many of my creative peers be pushed out of this town, and I think tonight, the issue is not to try and vilify, vilify short-term rentals, and I've actually really enjoyed, appreciated listening to, to the consciousness of some of our business owners and short-term rental owners here, who are, they have, they're invested in this community, and so they're not, you know, they're using their short-term rental to supplement long-term rentals. And I'm so glad that Sydney went before me, because she's a stunning example of someone in this community who has space to rent, but chooses, she makes that conscious choice to rent to someone that is a part of this place. And I don't think it's an either-or issue. It's not either the Carbondale community or tourism. It's both. It's very much both. It's, you know, Jess and his family, them deciding that they're going to do that to try and support renters here. And so really, maybe this is less for the board, but it's more for the people listening who are short-term renter owners here and who do want to continue that as a business, to really think about, like, how you can use that business to support these people here that are artists, that make this a wonderful place to live. And I, the way I've been able to stay here is by having people in the community that have done that for me. All of my, the people that have rented houses, rooms to me have done so at a rate that I could, that was one-third of my income, and now I am a homeowner here only because my, my family was able to help me get a mortgage. And so my plan going forward is to provide long-term housing, because that's what people have done for me. I'm an educator, I'm a musician, I was a educator at Wald Kinder, I teach private music lessons. And so I just really urge people to kind of reflect on their own lives and think about, how much do we actually need? Like, there's a lot of uncertainty in the world and a need to make sure that we have our basic health, education, housing, children, all of that covered, and to really assess what that is, and then to practice generosity of spirit by offering up the rest to maintaining our community as it is and to allowing for growth in the, in the creative areas of this town that have kept me here. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I spoke at the last one.
Lindsay, could you give us your last name, too?
Jones, Lindsay Jones. Yep. I live in affordable housing, newly built in Thompson Park. There are five, there are five total affordable housing units, and I agree with many people who have commented that affordable housing is another topic, but I do believe that the short-term rentals are a portion of that topic, and they need to be addressed. I just want to make five, five or so quick points that I researched in the, since the last meeting, and some of these things have been brought up by other people, so I thought I should bring them up to just throw them into the discussion. I read a few studies on how Airbnbs affect local housing communities and their economies. And so the main points that I got, and some of these come from the Economic Policy Institute, these main points that I found, and I'm not going to explain them, but I'll send you guys the article, or the, I have multiple. Number one, the cost to renters in local jurisdictions exceeds the benefits to travelers and property owners. This means that it's, it's more harmful to the renters than it is a benefit to the owner who is renting their place out as an, as a short-term rental. Next one is, there's little evidence that the high price of travel accommodations is a pressing economic problem. However, the high cost of long-term housing is a problem for American families. It goes on to say that the, there's evidence that suggests the presence, the presence of Airbnbs reduces the supply of housing. And although this is not a large majority, the Airbnbs is, is not always a large quantity, because it affects American families and their long-term housing, just that small number is actually a very large impact on the local community. The fourth point is, the benefit of increased tourism supporting the city economies is much smaller than what is advertised by these rental companies. Much of this spending would be done, otherwise, would, would already be done by travelers coming to the area anyway, staying at hotels or staying at other regulated bed and breakfast. Number five, Airbnb lodging leads to a less reliable tax payment to the city than hotels does. So taking away from hotels, Airbnbs are a direct competitor of hotels, and they are taking away a more reliable form of tax. And that's, those are all the points I have to make. I do also want to say, I have a similar story to everyone else who's lived here. I'm happy and very lucky to live in affordable housing. We own, as of last year. Prior to that, I've been houseless here. I've, my husband and I have, and we have also been dependent on camping and living in, in, in an unbuilt or unfinished space that was off the radar. So these, there are just a million stories out there of people with these issues, and I know it's a greater affordable housing issue, so I can't wait for that discussion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anybody else in the, in the audience who'd like to speak?
My name's Liza Mitchell. I live in Carbondale. I have never come to one of these meetings before, and I think a lot of people are in the same boat, it's a topic that has really drawn out from the community. I think it's amazing how much overlap there actually is in a lot of the stories. I work, spent my whole life in nonprofit public sector volunteering. I'm not a business person. I have no money to make. I live in deed-restricted affordable housing, where STRs are not allowed. That is a different idea, but there are creative solutions, such as allowing homeowners that are residents in some of these alignments to potentially, you know, if you were to open up some deed-restricted housing for STRs, that would totally compensate for any loss of STRs that came from some of the regulations that have been proposed. So I just, it's one of a million different creative solutions, and so I just really want to point out that there are, there are a lot of creative ways to maintain our community, to keep the people living here that they can. I, I appreciate all the stories of people renting out different parts of their house in order to make it here. I don't have that option, and I think the landscape has changed. People have fought tooth and nail to live here. Landscape is totally different. Here, again and again, the last two years, it's different. Let's look forward. Listen back to Alan's comments. I really want to reiterate them. I think he was very eloquent and poignant. Other people have referred to that again, so please go back and listen. It's, it's looking forward. It's like, what, now is a chance for us to look forward and say, what do we want this? If we don't regulate short-term rentals now, it's just going to get harder and harder. I had one other thing to say back here, I remember. So I thank you all for your consideration, and that's it.
Thank you, Liza. Okay, we're going to jump back, just one second, to Zoom. Looks like we have two speakers. Is that, I can't read it. Jaleen. Okay. Thought it was a one. Hi, Jaleen.
I'm not speaking.
Oh. Okay, you just wanted to say hi to us, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. Sorry.
Thank you, Jaleen.
Hi, Jaleen.
Okay. All right, Teresa.
Hi, my name is Brian. Actually, I'm Teresa's husband. I wanted to just offer a different perspective. We bought a house in Carbondale about a year and a half ago, and we came from a, a big city in the Midwest that was starting to regulate everything and restricting how we could use our property and having to get licenses for every little thing, and it just kind of ate away at the, you know, economic freedom that we had, and so we decided to find a new place to live and just loved Carbondale. We live there most of the time, but we have family in the Midwest and other parts of the country, and so we traveled to visit them, and we sort of, you know, had to stretch and buy a house that was a little bit outside of our price range, but the only way we were able to sort of afford to, you know, still see our family and live there is to short-term rent the property when we're not living there. And, you know, I think there's probably a, a bunch of people, I think we've heard from some of them tonight, who are in that, that category, so I guess I'm not here to, you know, to discuss the, the case of people that full-time, short-term rent their, their properties, but for people like us that live there, you know, most of the time and, and rented to sort of pay their, pay the mortgage when they're not there, I think that's a different category, and I would just caution, you know, the folks here to, you know, be careful not to over, over kind of regulate things, to harm folks that, you know, own property that, you know, the, the, the kind of agreement that was made between the, the, the county and the, and the property owners, you know, would change under, under their feet and sort of cause harm unintentionally. So, yeah, thanks for everybody's perspective. I have a lot of empathy for, you know, all the, all the struggles and the problems people are having. I don't think that there's, you know, necessarily a conflict between short-term rentals, at least the category that, you know, folks who do it as a part-time resident and affordable housing, just simply because if, if you're living your house sometimes and leaving, you know, and short-term renting it when you're gone, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to rent it to a, a, a long-term renter, so it's just going to sit vacant anyways. So you're bringing residents and stimulating the economy in that, in that vacant period. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Looks like that's the only, nobody else was raising their hand on Zoom. I will, we've got a couple more in the audience, so if you, if you're on Zoom and you want to speak, raise your hand now, or we'll close that in a little bit. So I think we have at least one more in the audience.
Hi, Chris.
Hey, Chris.
Passag244, North 7th Street. I guess I just, I'm with community first and just want to try to circle us back to, maybe, and, and address a couple of the, the other comments. I really appreciate hearing all the nuance and the different perspectives on this. It's great. I guess on the ADU issue, and the, that's, that is, that is a tricky, tricky question there, but we do, but, but if we do have a situation with permanent residents who are doing the, the short-term rental situation, those are people in the community who can be reached with a sort of a, more of a spirit, hearts and mind-spirit sort of thing, as opposed to vacant, out-of-town entities, and we can't guarantee that everyone's going to obviously follow that, but I think we've better chance of, of getting at people through a, maybe a less regulatory approach that way. On the data part, I totally, totally agree. We're going to need, as to that, that last comment, we're going to have to have, you know, permits to get data, basically. But, and we love to have that data, but we also, as an organization, believe this is a time as of the essence, and we should lay down a marker, especially sort of as a signal to the speculative market, that we are going to regulate this issue, and you should not put it in your plan, your business plan, that that's a guaranteed situation, that you're going to get to buy this house and rent it out as a speculative investor. Just a, a little bit of, about some of the commercial properties downtown. Carbondale first, I don't think, is opposed to the idea of, of properties like Jess's being, continuing as a short-term rental, but we believe they should go through the proper process of becoming a, a, a commercial lodging property, a bed and breakfast kind of situation. That way, places where we've zoned, where we've zoned, commercial activity and stuff, th- those are sort of automatically places you can, you could convert, and they are paying a taxes, a, a commercial tax rate, and so they are sort of maybe more appropriate, as opposed to a place like next to Sober's Park. If they have to go through a conditional use permit to do it, that gives all of the neighbors that opportunity to come out and talk about what the impacts to them will be next door, and then there is somebody onsite to answer the, answer to issues that may arise further on. And then finally, I don't think this is in any of our proposals, but I think, Kevin, we had laid out sort of discussing, you know, sort of laying out 2024 as the, the, the sort of day of decision on this, and that would give people like Jess and Harmony a whole, you know, a year and a half to try to figure out what is, are they going to go through a process to convert their property, or are they going to figure out a long-term rental situation that works? Clearly, long-term rentals are not, they're pretty lucrative in their own right, so those are just, I'm just trying to sort of address some of the other issues that people brought up, and why we think our, our proposal still holds water in light of all this other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Kevin, just before, since you already spoke, I want to give everybody a chance to speak first. So Patrick, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Patrick McGinty. I live here in Carbondale. John's my husband, so I, I'm also representing Carbondale Forward. I just want to put out there that there are, are employees that do help us with our short-term rentals are also community members, many of which are not represented here tonight and represent our Latino community, some of which might be undocumented, but are also family members and have families in our community. And just our little one-bedroom unit alone provides a little supplemental income to one family of $4,000 a year. I think that should be taken into consideration, as that would be taken away from her and her family. We also work with other people that do contracting with us that are also getting, getting by, doing the hustle, as we've heard tonight, and they make another $4,000 from us throughout the year. So those little side hustles aren't just impacting those of us that have come to the place where we can purchase something or continue to do the side hustles during today, but we're also helping people work on that side hustle to be members of our community that may not be artists, may not be teachers or musicians, but are also the workers in our, in our small family. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, guys, for hosting this, and thank you, guys, everyone, for showing up. My name is Kirian Sullivan. I've lived in Carbondale for the last six years. I used to work for Aspen Valley, or Aspen-Skeeco for a couple of years, and then I moved away from that work, and I've worked full-time in the ER for the Valley View Hospital for the last three years. I work as a tech there. I don't know any techs who live up in Valley, and most people live in silt, rifle. Some people live in Glenwood. You guys know the story. Housing is expensive. I don't need to dwell on that. The point I wanted to bring up is that, you know, a short-term rental, one house that is short-term rental potentially represents five professionals, say, someone who works in emergency, emergency- five professionals, say, uh, someone who works in emergency emergency room as a tech. My girlfriend works um, as a trainer here in Carbondale. Another roommate works as a counselor at Valley View. Another roommate works for Rebel Bikes. Another room roommate chooses to work remotely but live here. And uh, volunteers up valley. So, and that is permanent housing. I've been lucky, incredibly lucky to live in a place where we're able to have roommates and make that work. And without that, if or when we lose that housing, our rent will definitely go up. And yeah, so I think I've said enough. I'm just trying to add my representation. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, hi Shirley.
Um, I'm Shirley Powers. I live on Wheel Circle. Alan, I haven't met you, but we're neighbors apparently. Um, I grew up here, born and raised. Um, I was really fortunate to buy a house a year ago before prices really started skyrocketing. Um, I bought my house for four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, in September, my attached neighbor bought their house for six ninety-nine. We're attached. The units are very similar. Um, several of the people looking at the property were looking at the property to short term rent and they did not live here. We were really excited when a family that was living in Snowmass bought the house. Um, they have two kids. They have lightsaber fights in the yard and they're great neighbors. Um, they're actually one of the people that are gonna travel and short term rent their home when they're out of town. Um, I just want to reiterate that what we're proposing would allow a lot of the people who have spoken tonight to continue to short term rent their basement units or the bedrooms in their homes or the studios that are attached to their homes. Um, and I really uh, it hurts to hear the kind of like, I got mine, so it doesn't matter anymore. Um, I did get mine. I I was able to afford a house here, but I'm up here because I have friends and family who are moving and we all see that. I've even seen it for thirty years. And Carbondale has a, you know, a chance to try and be proactive on this issue before it hits us really hard. So thank you guys for considering everything tonight. And thank you, Carbondale Forward and everybody who has spoken. Um, I think this has been a really productive conversation.
Thank you, Shirley. Thanks again for your efforts too. Okay, um, before Kevin kind of closes, any anyone else want to make comments? Okay, go for it, Kevin.
Good evening, Kevin Reyes again. Uh, Carbondale, uh, Community First, Community First Carbondale, getting the uh, acronyms mixed up here. Uh, the first thing, I just want to respond to a few of the comments that have been mentioned. I just want to provide a little clarity uh, to the owners of the uh, the Creamery, previous location of the Creamery. Uh, I know there's some concern about uh, how this, these provisions are gonna affect um, buildings like that that are located in commercial zone districts. We are not proposing to change the land use code in any way. We're not trying to amend any zone districts. Right now, as it's written, uh, STRs, short term rentals, which we refer to as as lodging, those are allowed by right in the code in a commercial zone district. Those STRs are not going to be touched. What we're going for here is residential zone districts. So the owners of the Creamery and other people who have spoken who own commercial property do not need to worry. We're not touching commercial property. What what we're really trying to do here, and I, I'm gonna provide a little bit of a different perspective that hasn't been mentioned, but we're actually trying to make sure that these existing short term rentals comply with the current code. Right now, the current code is not being met. And let me, let me explain, let me explain why real quick. I'm gonna unpack it. So pursuant to chapter eight point two of the Unified Development Code, a residential zone district is defined as the following. Uses that are characterized by residential occupies occupancy of a dwelling unit as a household. Tendency is arranged on a month to month or longer basis. And then it goes on to say that lodging where tendency may be arranged for a period of less than thirty days is classified under lodging facilities category. When you look at the lodging facility definition, it states that a lodging facility is a a for profit facility where lodging, meals and the like are provided to drink transient visitors and guests for a defined period. So I I took a look at the code and I didn't see one residential zone district that allows a lodging facility in it by right. Right now, all of the short term rentals that are full time do not comply with the current code. These are, these are nonconforming uses that uh, that are occurring right now. Um, there are a lot of issues with that. First of all, they don't comply with code. So if I happen to live next door to one of these things and there was a new bachelor party in my backyard and in my next door neighbor every every weekend, I would have strong legal footing to go after the owner of that STR. I could sue the city for not enforcing its own code. And additionally, because these are commercial properties, they need to meet commercial building, building code. These properties don't have ADA access. They also need to provide uh, fire sprinkler protection, increased alarm requirements, and more restrictive exiting requirements. These are requirements that are, that are prescribed and required in commercial buildings. I, again, I highly doubt that many of these STRs meet any of these requirements. And if they were, if they had to come into compliance and make the necessary improvements to do so, the cost of doing that would be so prohibitive that the owners would probably want to sell the property. The next thing I want to address is um, you know, the uh, Carbondale Forward mentioned the uh, the long range plan about wanting to get more um, uh, commercial lodging in these residential zone districts. And that's something they can do right now and comply with code. There is a a mechanism in the code that's baked into the current code that allows any of these homeowners that have these as as full time short term rentals to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get conditional use review. They can do that right now. They have chosen not to do so because there are no enforcement mechanisms mechanisms in place to require them to to do that. Our provisions would not change that requirement. They could to continue to go to the P and Z to get that conditional review if they want to do so. And then the next thing I want to mention, um, the the memo that was provided mentioned LLCs and why we didn't write regulations to restrict LLCs. Uh, I just want to state, um, the Colorado Revised Statute Title Seven, Article Eighty, Part One. It says, it says each LLC formed and existing under this article may purchase, take, receive, lease, or otherwise acquire, own, hold, improve, use, and otherwise deal in with real or personal property or in interest in wherever situated. So in other words, state statute prohibits municipalities from restricting LLCs and other business entities from purchasing property. There's nothing we can do about that. But we have done, and I think Shirley or or Ally mentioned this, is we have created a system that um, says that if you get a a permit for a short term rental, it can only be issued to a person, a a person and not a business entity. Um, and then the last thing I want to mention, sorry, I'm getting a little bit of cotton mouth here. Last thing I want to mention, you know, we have a lot of uh, mentioning about data and and the need to get data. And data is always, data is important. You know, I come from the planning side of things and and data is always important. But one thing that we know right now, uh, you know, here, a piece of data that that we should probably think about is over thirty municipalities in Colorado have short term rental regulations in place and there's more um, happening right now. Specifically up valley, uh, just this evening, uh, the Pittin County Board of Commissioners is reviewing a proposal that is uh, more or less synonymous with what we're proposing. They are contemplating restricting STRs only in owner occupied houses in Pittin County. Aspen has a moratorium on the books. I'm personally working on that uh, in Aspen to try and get some some proposals and get some uh, revisions in place. Those, if those two things pass, th- in 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 Pittin County and in Aspen, the demand for short term rentals is is still here and that's gonna come down valley pretty quick. And so it's great that we have data. We have a snapshot in time of of what these things look like. But we could have had this data in Aspen five years ago and said, everything's fine. Let's, let's, let's uh, you know, let's sit on our hands and and not do anything about it. So um, I understand we need to continue to collect data. But again, we need to keep our foot on the gas because the longer we wait, the more property is going to be purchased by um, other people that don't live in this community and 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 be used as a short term rental. And then uh, lastly, uh, the gentleman from from Glenwood Springs who who made his way up here. Um, he had a lot of good ideas and I want to just mention, I would encourage trustees to read the regulations we've proposed. About ninety percent of what he recommended is is in our regulations. The one thing that we do not support is creating some sort of system that uh, creates a cap. We don't want to see a cap that allows a hundred STRs to be unoccupied by a uh, an owner. Uh, because that, again, it gets at an arbitrary outcome. If someone has a business with fifteen employees and they make their living through STRs, they can easily have one of those employees submit the permits needed on in a timely basis in order to get, in order to get that approved. Someone who is living in Carbondale, who works up in Aspen, needs to commute and doesn't have a lot of free time on their hands, they're gonna really struggle to get that permit application in on time and they're gonna be out of luck. We we, we've written these regulations uh, with equity in mind and with staff time in mind. Um, so again, I just want to mention that. And um, I think that's, I think that's everything I I wanted to uh, I wanted to mention. I'm happy to answer any other questions if uh, trustees like to ask.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for all your work. For those of you who don't know, Kevin kind of got this and Shirley and Ally and Chris got this ball rolling and said, hey, let's talk about it. And uh, you've done a lot of heavy lifting for the town. So I appreciate you, Kevin. And everybody. Um, okay, that looks to be it for public comment. Um, sorry, Nina.
Can I follow after Kevin?
Nope, I'm sorry. Thank you. We're closing public comment. He's actually kind of part of the, part of the discussion. So I wanted him to be able to have a second go. Okay, um. That's very inappropriate. Hey, hey, this is not a discussion, okay? John, enough. Uh, all right, um, we are moving on to uh, discussion. And before we do, I want to say thank you to everybody who spoke. To me, it's always inspiring when public really steps up and comes out and and lets your voices be heard. I think there's some um, uh, not only inspiring comments, but I appreciate the thought and creativity that went into uh, both proposals. Um, it's eight thirty. We normally end meetings around nine, so we'll do the best we can to get some resolution. Um, but we'll bring it back to the board. Um, any questions uh, we want to start with? I'll, I'll start with a couple. Um, so, and it's it's kind of, uh, it's something that really hasn't been discussed. And Lauren, this is something that I think is gonna require Mark to weigh in on. Um, but I think um, for me, I, it's been clear here that uh, there's pros and cons on both sides. There's, it's gonna be really tricky to find the sweet spot. But homeowners volunteering real estate transfer taxes as well as um, offering up deed restrictions. Um, to me seems a way to benefit affordable housing in the long run. But I don't really have a good sense of how we can use those tools. And maybe we're not allowed to use them at all. But it would be good to know how we're able to use those. Um, uh, perhaps as a way to offset the impact um, or to mitigate the income that um, that isn't paid uh, through property tax. Um, so that was one of the questions I had. Um, and chime in if anybody has thoughts on. Well, like
Are you saying the delta between commercial property tax and residential property tax and the um, R- Rita being a way to close that gap?
Yeah, I I, um, maybe I should have made these earlier, but um, so as someone said before, if someone owns a property and they're using it as a a non owner occupied short term rental, that property, except for a few like Harmony Scots and some other commercial, commercial properties, they're being taxed at a residential rate, which is about a fourth of what a commercial property would pay. Um, so I I think it's fair to say that they're not paying their impacts as designed by the systems we have in place. So is it an opportunity uh, for us to um, with it? In terms of a rent, we would have to request it, but could a house voluntarily put a real estate transfer tax on their house? Uh, that that money would then fund affordable housing? Or could they offer up a deed restriction uh, that would also uh, benefit affordable housing? It's, it's kind of out there, but that's one of the things that I think about as something to explore. Uh, uh, chime in if anybody uh, wants to say anything. I think I'm gonna go back to some comments and kind of sum up what I have to, what I've heard uh, both tonight and others. Um, and I really would love to entertain a debate on both sides of this because I think um, it's, it's just fascinating that I, you know, I I think with as formed in, as informed as I am now with all these public comments, I think I could do a good job on both sides. Um, but in terms of observations and assumptions, I think with respect to what problem we're trying to solve, preliminary research, even though we don't have all the data, uh, preliminary research does indicate that short term rentals have increased uh, in Carbondale. Some are clearly displacing long term rentals without a doubt. And some houses intended to be workforce housing are now non owner occupied uh, short term rentals. Uh, Erica Sparhawk, who's not here tonight because she has COVID, uh, did some research in a recent project we approved uh, less than a few years ago, intending to be workforce housing has four non occupied short term rentals in it. So clearly it's displacing workforce housing in some uh, cases. Um, I think it's hard to argue Kevin's point that our code says something that's black and white right now. Uh, and I um, and I think, like I said, it's hard to argue that we just haven't enforced that. Um, so that's a um, that's an important point to make. As Alan Harvey said, um, I, I too agree that it's more appropriate to compare the number of short term rentals to the number of long term rentals available or possibly available. And it's a much bigger number. Um, to me, that's, that's a more important and more valuable comparison than just looking at the number of short term rentals compared to the number of houses. Um, I think Carbondale First did an excellent job of demonstrating, excuse me, Carbondale Forward did an excellent job of demonstrating the benefits of short term rentals and that there's, I would say there's clearly a need for some short term rentals in Carbondale. Uh, we clearly don't have the bed base in in hotels. And if we were eliminate all the short term rentals right now, that would have a a serious negative of impact on our our local businesses. Uh, and therein lies kind of the pickle we're in, right? If now it figures out, how do we address that? Um, a few other things that I I just, you know, the taxpayer bill rights that passed in nineteen ninety-two uh, is a great thing from some regards. But there are three ways that it really impacts us. And I think it's just important for this community discussion to really recognize that. Um, again, as I mentioned, the last meeting, it prohibits us from uh, implementing a real estate tran- transfer tax. We're not even allowed to ask the voters whether or not we want that. So to me, that's the the most, uh, the the greatest rational nexus for um, um, uh, funding affordable housing, but we're not allowed to do that. It requires that if if there's a tax as proposed by uh, Community First Carbondale, um, that it go to the voters. So even if we decide to go that route, all of you Carbondale's uh, voters get to decide that. Um, and lastly, um, getting back to the property tax issue, I think it's really important to note that um, because these houses, if your house is not a commercial property, you're paying a small fraction of the property tax that a commercial property is. So there clearly is a fairness aspect here of which businesses are intended to be businesses and are regulated as businesses and those that are not um, to Cedar's point. So um, it's really tricky. Uh, I think unless you understand all the nuances, it's, it's um, the solutions may seem a little simpler than they really are. So we've got our work cut out for us. Um, and I have some, some, some additional questions, but I'm gonna be quiet for a minute and see if there's other thoughts before I proceed with any questions. Ben.
Um, I'd, I'd echo Dan's kind of just, and everybody said it, like, thank you for such a good discussion. I feel like this is how policymaking is supposed to work, right? And you're coming in with different perspectives. You're informing us. We're listening and we're gonna grapple with this. So it's not gonna get decided tonight, but I appreciate both the organized groups and just individuals who came in and and dialed into Zoom. Um, and I've learned a lot. Um, I just say, you know, let's keep in mind, I don't think we really have like a do nothing I just say, you know, let's keep in mind, I don't think we really have like a do nothing option at this point. We've taken that, we've discussed whether to discuss this for the past few years. And we've decided each time, no, it's okay, it's not a big deal right now, it's not a burning issue. But I think, you know, Community First Carbondale, at first was going to go straight to the ballot. And I think that if we don't do anything, it would be very likely that a group of people in town would go straight to the ballot and that exactly what they proposed would pass. I think it would be really hard to imagine that failing because it would be overwhelmingly popular, right? Like, so I just think as we work through this, let's keep that in mind. That if we do nothing, I think it's quite likely that the voters will approve essentially what's been proposed. So I think what we have an opportunity to do here is to be really deliberative and nuanced and get into some details and make it really work as well as it possibly can. I agree with what Alan Harvey said and what others have said that now is the right time to regulate it because it's not out of control yet. And each person who invests in a property and makes it a short-term rental is going to make it harder and harder for us to ever get our hands around this as a concern. So I think now is the time to be proactive. And I'm more concerned about more of this happening in the future than with the level of this that's happening right now. I agree that two percent of our total housing, even if it's more than that of the total rentals, is not a like jaw-dropping number. But I think it could be if we didn't do anything. I think we don't want to be the only town in the Roaring Ford Valley without regulations, which it sounds like we may soon be if we don't act. And then all those pressures come here. So I think with all that, I just am saying, I think there's a lot of reasons that we need to do something. I think the easy steps are permits. Seems like everybody's pretty much in agreement on that. That helps us with the data, but I do think we have enough data to start acting. I don't think we have to sit and wait for more data. But I think we can move pretty quickly on permits to run a short-term rental and that each permit can only be issued to a natural person. That makes sense to me. And that each person can only get one permit. That fits in with the gist of kind of how I think most people are thinking about the purpose of these. I think that the zoning points that Kevin raised made at the very end of the meeting were very compelling and it had not been presented to me in exactly that way. And I really appreciate him digging into the code. To say, to read out our code and say, this use does not conform with that, troubles me as somebody who, you know, we developed that code. And I think that that's, let's just say that that's troubling. I've been thinking about the zoning approach to this, but I know that, you know, we're kind of taking it on as a non-zoning approach. And they proposed, don't get into changing zoning because that'll go through P and Z, it'll be a much longer process even. And we won't be able to act now. And so that was an interesting twist on that because I was starting to think that like, as we talked about some of these that are in commercial properties in the core of town, historic commercial core, yeah, that makes sense to have that there and they are paying the commercial real estate taxes. So it's interesting to think, I didn't really realize, I guess, until Kevin's final comment that what they're proposing would not touch those, even if they're not owner occupied. I hadn't seen that detail. So that, that gives me more reason to think that it's a really strong proposal. I'm also interested in this Pagosa Springs policy that Carbondale Forward brought up. And I want to spend some more time researching that. I like the idea of a bed and breakfast license potentially for non-owner occupied units. And then I think a big question that I have, two questions that I have that I just don't know the answer to is, what do you do about ADUs? I think that Carbondale Ford makes a really good point that we don't want to push this demand toward ADUs and then displace a lot of long-term renters there. I think that's a really good point that we need to grapple with. And then this idea also that Carbondale Ford brings about, you know, large second homes, we can say RVR, but they exist in other parts of town as well, where the owners just won't rent it, you know, long-term because they want to use it whenever they want and they want to be able to block out their calendar. I would rather those get occupied by short-term renters who go out to our restaurants and support our economy. And they're not just sitting empty. So I don't know how to deal with the ADUs and the large second homes right now. But I support moving forward with some regulations. And I think I've said enough.
Thank you, Ben. Marty?
Yeah, I appreciate everyone coming out, being on Zoom, sharing your thoughts. One thing I didn't like, there shouldn't be us versus them. I really don't want to see that. We're trying to come to some common ground here. While we may not agree on everything, I think we all agree we want what's best for the whole town. There are two separate issues. Affordable housing is one issue, short-term rentals are a separate issue. And let's not get confused in saying addressing one is going to sell off the other because it won't. I would like to see short-term rentals. We need the information, how many are out there? I'd like to see them licensed and regulated, inspected for safety. I don't know about the sprinkler systems or whatever that you were referring to, but the very least they need to have fire extinguishers. They need to have smoke detectors, et cetera. Just very basic things. I also have a concern. If it's being run as a business, then let's treat it like it's a business. Then it should be taxed at a commercial rate, not at a residential rate. I mean, that's just real simple. I understand that short-term rentals provide some employment for people in the community and that's fine and good. But that is not enough just to offset them. We have, we have a work cut out for us. I agree with Alan and everyone else, we need the data and we need to do it now. If there are forty-eight units now and Aspen's closed it off and Snowmass Village is closing it off and Besold is closing it off and Pecan County is considering closing it off, there are people in this building who will tell you they're getting phone calls every week from people outside of town who are asking what the policy is on short-term rentals. And they see it as a business. They don't see it as a community. They, they bring their money to buy the place, their kids don't go to school here, they're not attending our First Friday or social events. They are not an integral part of our community. So when we speak about, you know, an LLC, yes, if they have a person, someone who spoke earlier here today had approached me about this. They live here, their driver's license says Carbondale. They pay their taxes here, their tax return says Carbondale. I have no problem with them having a short-term rental. I do have a problem with someone whose address, I just like to pick on Malibu, says Malibu. Or New Rochelle, New York, or a suburb of Dallas or Phoenix or wherever, who's using this as a real estate investment. That's all it is because all they're going to care about is the bottom line. That's my own prejudice. And with that, I'll pass it on to one of the other trustees.
Thank you, Marty. Lonnie, Heather, any comments?
Don't forget Louise.
Thank you.
I'll comment. My takeaway from tonight's public comment in simple terms is that the proliferation of short-term rental units throughout Carbondale intended for profit have become disruptive to the town's tranquility. I can't talk anymore. Our community's character is clearly a compelling draw that sets Carbondale apart from its up-and-down valley neighbors that many of our longstanding residents don't wish to compromise. From my perspective, the attainable affordable housing arguments, although to some extent valid, are not the only or primary driver of the current workforce crisis. Research sponsored by several local initiatives reveal that subpar wages are the number one obstacle facing those challenged to live in this valley, which would be more of an employer business issue. If your weekly take-home pay is twelve hundred, as an example, and it costs five hundred a week for childcare and then layer in resort-like rental costs and inflated basic living expenses, you're going to have some challenges. The other thing, I'm looking at my notes. In looking forward to keep an eye on the changing demographics and the changing trends, using RVR as an example, the developer in nineteen ninety-two projected that a certain no-maintenance subdivision that was marketed to retirees would become rental housing once the original owners were no longer living. And that hasn't happened in the case of young families coming in and sending their kids to school and the young families establishing themselves here. So it's, it's pretty important to, yes, look forward, but then really be informed about what is likely to happen based on the economic landscape. Thanks.
Thanks, Lonnie. Heather or Louise?
Yeah, I can jump in on a couple of things. I mean, like first echo, I guess, everyone else in the big thanks. So I concur. Thank you. So much time has been spent so far and seeing this as just the beginning to get this really nailed down. I agree with Ben. I don't think this is a no, you know, no movement now. I think we need to figure out what this looks like and, you know, get it rolling. I needed to, the last time we talked, I was trying to articulate, you know, what I saw as some of the challenges around land use. So I think having Kevin kind of speak about the code was, was really important and enlightening. And then I had this little piece and I have to give credit to Michael Miracle from Aspen-Snowmass. But he was talking about this decoupling. So the idea that in, you know, since the platform came into place, whatever it was VRBO first, you know, and then Airbnb and subsequent. We spend so much time thinking about and planning for where lodging should go, right? And that's related so much to the infrastructure, whether that's transit infrastructure, you know, critical walkability, even the services themselves, water, sewer, all of those things, right? And you're thinking about the planning and the land planning and what this sort of proliferation and in places where the proliferate, it's a really hard word to say, especially at almost nine o'clock at night. Proliferation is worse and worse. You know, you're seeing the impact of that, right? So this many more homes, it ties people more to their cars, you know, so that dispersal of lodging has a greater impact if there's two hundred homes way out here versus two hundred lodging units that are put here where the time was spent doing the planning, right? So that said, I think wrestling with the differences in our zoning districts is an important one. I think it really is, right? Thinking about how, and what I would say is thinking about STRs in our commercial districts. Because if there's complete uncertainty, we have a hard enough time trying to attract a new hotel, let alone if there's complete uncertainty and, hey, the STRs are twenty now in Carbondale's commercial districts. Maybe they're going to be eighty, right? So, because I think owner occupied solves some of that, but if we're not touching the commercial districts. So like, I'd like to make sure we talk about STRs as a lodging solution. It has an upside, it has a downside. It's a pretty big downside. So, so I want both of those. As we get into detail, I'm interested in maybe the idea that there are no caps on the owner occupied, but do we cap some non-owner occupied? So we can still, and again, maybe that's tied to zone districts. Like, so there can still be part of that solution as some of our lodging, but we're doing it in the right places and we're doing it with some pretty clear limits, like what we want it to look like. So other than that, I mean, I think the list, I guess for me, while I appreciate the tax thing and trying to figure out a delta, there's so much more that needs to go into that, whether it's like Rita or, you know, can Garfield County be triggered to reassess a property as commercial? Like, that solves it right there. We don't have to mess with it. We're not doing something complicated with Rita. You know, and then if they decide to pull their STR and they sell it and someone lives there, Garfield County has to reassess. I don't even know if that's like a thing, but I just think the simpler we can keep it. But for me, I think we agreed to say, what can we tackle right now and like to March? And so there's some that I feel like we should put a pin in because we said, like, what can we do right now? Make sure we get it in place by March. And then what can we kind of put on the, this triggers taxes, this triggers more complicated stuff and that can go on the next list and the next, so. I appreciated your question. I think it'd just be good to like, put a pin in it because that could get us whatever, like further off from the, these are the things we can definitely do right now.
Yeah. And I have thoughts on that, but I want to see if Louise, Louise, any comments on your end?
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, just a couple of comments. Thanks to everyone who came out to the meeting, who commented both online and there in person. To echo Ben's point that it really is great to, you know, see that everyone wants to have their voices heard as part of this public process. You know, to me, I think somebody brought up, you know, what is it we're looking to protect? And, and what's the issue? I think the issue goes beyond housing and I think the issue is really about inequality. I think, you know, I worked hard myself to afford to buy a house here six years ago. But I do see what has happened with places like Thompson Park that you now have out-of-state purchasers who are the only ones who are now able to really afford to buy in our community. And what does that say about, you know, obviously the market forces, but the fact that they can then just turn them around and, you know, rent them as short-term rentals to more than afford what those payments are. I do agree that I think we need to do something to Ben's point again, because Carbondale First is ready to put something on the ballot and it's going to pass, I have no doubt. And I really appreciate Alan's comments about this, you know, this, this board, we have to do something about short-term rentals. And I know that it's not the solution to our housing crisis, but it is something that we have to send a message about what's important to this community. And I think there is a balance between sustainable and responsible tourism and housing. If it's not through commercial tax, it's through a hefty permit towards homes that are in residential districts. You know, that could be something to be looked at as well, but I know that it's on us now to do something and respond to what is a pressing need and situation. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Louise. I want to clear the air with one thing. John and Nina, I'm sorry I was short, but Kevin and his group have put in an enormous amount of time. They've been going out to the public, engaging them. They were the ones who started this and I, I specifically said that I wanted him to have a chance to respond. So I apologize I was short with you and I would hope that you'd respect that. Thank you. Thank Nina, public comments over. Thank you, Nina. Okay, Heather, I think you bring up a very good point that we all know is present. We, some of the short timers on the board, you and me included, wanted to take some action by March before we're off the board. But clearly when I'm looking at all my questions, almost all my big questions pertain to things that would happen after that. I'm not hearing anyone on the board say that we shouldn't permit short-term rentals. I think there's probably unanimous feeling that we need data and the way to do that is to permit them. Stop me if I'm saying anything that's not agreed. When we last talked, what I remember, and chime in if I'm not remembering correctly, we talked about the idea of permitting, at least again, this is what I remember, essentially grandfathering in anybody who has a short-term rental right now, but possibly not allowing more permits for a period of time while we study the issue. Do others remember that?
Well, we had some concern about grandfathering in.
Okay.
Okay. And some of the concern was you have a corporation or a real estate investment trust that owns a short-term rental. rental. Are you saying you're gonna grandfather them in?
That's what I'm asking.
It's the term grandfathering. I thought we were not comfortable with the word grandfather.
Right.
Like, we wanted to make sure we were providing opportunity and time for existing properties to kind of come up to whatever we put in place versus like, we put it in place and you better do this in thirty days. But it was more timeframe to let everyone like get and I think, you know, twenty twenty-three or something like that was mentioned. So it's a critical difference between grandfathering, which just says, whatever you're doing now, you're good.
Yeah. And that was the concern, because otherwise you're gonna have, you're gonna have a land rush. You know, you say you're gonna put this in thirty days from now. Anyone who's thinking about this is gonna be, well, I better do this now so I can get grandfathered in.
Well, and that was, so this was, this is another question I have Lauren that I don't know if we're allowed to do, but again, remembering the conversation the way I I think I did was if you and I actually, I think this is Kevin and I talked about this, not necessarily the board, but if you say you paid lodging tax in twenty twenty-one. Then that gives you the permission to submit a permit now. But I'm hearing that's a little bit different than what we're saying, which is now, we're gonna, we're gonna request that everybody submit a permit. Whether you've whether you had a short-term rental in the past or not. We're gonna say everyone come submit for a permit. And then I think we will have the gold rush. So I guess I'm looking for somebody smarter than me to kind of call to say, what are we asking here? What are we? Cause what we're trying to do tonight. Uh, at least a little bit is give Mark some guidance for what this ordinance in March could look like.
Well, I think we have to speak to Mark, but I would say if you have an existing short-term rental, you need to get permitted. Okay. As of this date, if you have a short-term rental, you need to get permitted. But not put it into the future where people can say, oh, I better hurry up and get this deal done. I'm sorry, Ben.
Sorry, make sure that's on. I just want to clarify. So the purpose of the permit is to gather some data.
Yeah.
Uh, and have a baseline, but people already have to get a sales tax license, right? Is my understanding? No? Oh, that's right, because it goes through Airbnb now. Okay, they used to have to get one and now they don't. Okay, so that's why we don't have that.
So lodge, their lodging taxes are still all coming through VRBO or Airbnb?
Yeah.
Private, right?
They don't have to, but if they're part of Airbnb or VRBO, it's coming through them. I thought we had a contract.
Yeah, okay.
Some are, some are.
Yeah, so. I I guess what we were saying is nothing happens between now and whenever the ordinance is put in place and it's a go. And part of the ordinance would be what you were saying. If you, you know, ha- have, i- if you are operating this, the sixty-eight that it looks like probably Eric could put a lot of effort into and let's say that's pretty close. If you are there, if we find you are listed, da-da-da-da-da, like beginning in March, if you pull a new permit, it has to meet all the guidelines. Beginning in March, if you are one of those listed, you have, you know, X period of time as well to catch up to guidelines.
But I don't think we're gonna have the guidelines nailed down by March.
Or whenever ordinance would would be put in place, right?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. What is, the ordinance in March might just be permitting. And so what are the parameters around permitting? I don't know. Are are you saying that you?
I thought we were trying to dig a little deeper by March.
I I think we are.
Yeah, I think so.
Would be the hope, not just permits.
But I think, I think regardless of what we do by March, I think part of the idea was to give people some time to adjust to whatever's coming. So even if we say in March. You know, as of such and such date, a year and a half out from that, like twenty twenty-four, I think is what this group has proposed. You can only renew your permit if it's your primary residence. Like, that would be one way to go. Anybody can get a permit in March, you know, or whenever that goes into effect. Anybody can get a permit, but your permits all expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and then you have to meet these criteria, which they're suggesting is primary residence.
When you say anybody, do you mean anybody or only those that are operating right now?
I would, I would think anybody. I mean, I.
Okay. See, and that's my concern. Okay, cause someone who isn't operating now, they understand that you're gonna have to be permitted. We're gonna have permit regulations by March. And they're gonna have a year and a half to come into compliance. They can hurry up and, yeah, make an offer on this place.
Yeah. And that's, it's definitely gonna overwhelm staff.
And like I said, staff is already getting the phone calls.
I shouldn't say definitely.
But they've been getting them for a while. So the interest is there. And as these other communities up Valley have put moratorium and moratoriums and stuff, it's just gonna create more pressure down here, is what I'm afraid.
But then does it solve, you know, some of these disruptive issues that have been brought forward, right? With short-term rentals being in a residential area and in a non-owner occupied structure, so.
And I think the fact that we're having these discussions may be good. That may be enough to intimidate some people who might be thinking of, oh, you know, I better buy this property now. Because they don't like uncertainty and uncertainty is, in this case, would be our front.
Kevin or Lauren, do you guys have any thoughts on permitting only those who are operating right now or opening it up to anybody? And if you don't, that's okay, but.
Well, I think it depends on whether or not you are looking to have any kind of a cap or a cap overall or a cap in any particular zone. Sorry.
You know, it depends on where you, where you want to end up with it. I know that if if you're trying to solve the problem of disruption to the neighborhood. It might be a different question than just how many short-term rentals are there? Um, because it may be, what's the composition of the short-term rental and what's allowed there? I had the conversation with somebody today about, you know, the regulations about, you know, how many non related people in a house. Well, if it's a family reunion of thirty-five people. They may all be related, but that's not really what you want in a small residential district. So I, so I guess we're at different levels of are we talking about the sheer number of STRs? Are we talking about the code and safety, or are we talking about how it affects the neighborhood? And those, I think those are potentially different questions.
I think what we hear the most is how it affects the neighborhood. To start with, so that would be from the bottom of the pyramid up. And then from there, um, talk about, well, so what would be the least disruptive? And what would your code enforcement be to achieve that? What I'm hearing.
Yeah, I guess I just wonder if we could get, like, here's what we think the substance of what we're trying to get in. Here's everything we want to get into this bucket by. I mean, I'm just using March, cause we had talked about that previously. You know, just everything we want to get into that bucket. Then we could walk down the road of like, okay, now what does that look like for quote-unquote existing? And then we need to define existing and da-da-da, but seems like that's a moving target to have a conversation about like what's existing and how they would comply. We we don't quite know what we're gonna, you know, put in place if it's beyond permitting.
Well, do we all agree that one of, one of the goals for March was to stay the proliferation of STRs until we, till we figure it out? Cause I thought that was part of the the point of saying, sign up by this date. Because otherwise, we could have a lot of people who say, I'm gonna go get a STR right now, cause I see the regulations down the road.
Go ahead, Ben. Sorry.
That's okay. Here's what I'm thinking. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking mostly along the lines of what Community First Carbondale has proposed and and I think defended pretty well tonight. Is that in March, we pass a regulation that says by such and such date, July first of this year, something like that. To to have a short-term rental, you gotta get a permit. That permit is good until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, right? So you've got a year and a half. Anybody can get that permit. In order to have it renewed. January first, twenty twenty-four. You must either be the primary resident of the, you know, it must be your primary resident, or it must be in a commercial zone district, which I think is a really important point that's been brought forward tonight, and that would allow some of the specific cases that we heard about. Or you can apply for a bed and breakfast permit. I mean, I think that that's a really important point, that we've always allowed that kind of use in residential neighborhoods. And I remember a conversation five years ago or so where somebody came in for a B and B permit. And it, a a regular B and B, not an Airbnb, and it was this convoluted conversation where they're like, we were like, why would you apply for this? You can just do this now. Just put it on Airbnb. You know, it kind of, our bed and breakfast permit, which as Kevin pointed out, requires you to get a special use permit so the neighbors can come in and talk about the potential impacts, that sort of thing. So it's you're either living there, you're good. No cap on those, get your permit, follow the rules. Or it's in a commercial zone district, you're good, that's always allowed. For your Airbnb. Like, that to me still leaves doors open for all these options without incentivizing the just you know, basing house prices and rents off what you can get as a nightly rate. I think it tamps that way down, which is part of our goal. And I think it tamps way down the impacts in residential neighborhoods. Where they're not in our occupy.
And I would just say, on further reflection. I think the uncertainty, if people are speaking about a typical single fam- average single-family home, it's one point one million. Which is the number someone used tonight. If people gonna invest one point one million. And they know the certainty of being able to rent that out as a short-term rental. As I say, January first, twenty twenty-four. Is at risk? I think they might think long and hard before they put down over a million dollars to buy a place under risk that they can't use it and generate the income that they were forecasting.
I mean, that's the process for anything as we do land use code revisions, all of that. You don't do them under a moratorium scenario. People know changes are coming down the pipeline. They'll keep an eye on those changes and, you know, if it fits with where they're headed, great. If it doesn't, so I I like the timeline that Ben, I think, laid out, and then it's the substance of what goes into place here, 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 and here. And that's.
Yeah, I can live with that.
So. Okay.
Yeah, that hits all the high hard ones, I think, too.
And I think it avoids that land rush concept, right? Or whatever, like you just said, it's like you wouldn't just go grab a permit and buy a house because you know well, my permit's only good until sixteen months from now. And then if I don't meet these criteria, maybe it's been those sixteen months getting a bed and breakfast permit. But otherwise, if I'm not living there, or if, and if it's in residential, then I'm gonna have to rent it long-term, and that's helping us accomplish our goals. So I think the one thing that I'm still struggling with, I gen- I generally agree with everything here. And I generally agree with a lot of the things in Community First. But I also agree that having a little bit of time to get it right makes sense. So I guess the question is I'm fine setting a deadline, saying your permit is good till the end of twenty twenty-three. But I don't want to tie our hands to what those requirements are going to be, cause we may want to tweak them. I think we could tweak them, though. I think we should, kind of like Heather said, like, put a pin in it. And I think if that's where we're headed, I don't think we have to decide that tonight.
No, no.
But I think that by March, I, there's so much community input on this right now. Like, I think it's unfair to people to say, well, we're just gonna we're gonna kind of not decide, and then we're gonna come back later. Like, if it was that complicated, yeah, but I think it's actually I don't want to diminish the issue. It is complicated. There are a lot of people's lives involved, and I respect that, but I think that the choices before us are fairly straightforward. Or we get into something, I mean, I I would be willing, you know, at the next one of these, I think we're gonna talk about this a few more times. Maybe we dig into some alternatives to that, but if we start moving forward with like that's kind of the plan, let's bounce things off that, let's look at that Pagosa Springs one or anything else anybody wants to bring in with with what's not right about that.
Dan, are you saying that, okay. They will have to apply for a permit, say by March first?
No, I I I hear what I I I think that was something that was originally discussed, but like I said, I I agree with the notion of setting a a deadline after March, say June or July, to, whatever you said, Ben, um, July. As the time when someone would need to submit.
Okay, cause we need to get the data of how many units are out there.
Right. And we're not gonna really have that until we have all the permits.
Until we require them to get permitted.
And I agree, we want that data, but I don't think, so when we get that data, it's either gonna say oh, wow, there's like eighty, and we thought there was sixty, or it's gonna say there's forty, and we thought there, like, it's not gonna be there's five hundred, and it's not gonna be there's ten, right? It's gonna be somewhere in this range of like forty to eighty.
But how many are in residential areas? Such as Thompson Park?
Yeah.
And how many are on Main Street?
So I would still say I would advocate for putting forward and passing our proposal, and then we still have a year and a half to change it. Right? But I think that there's a lot to be said for getting something done with the existing group of people we have and the public, you know, dialogue that we're having. And then we have a year and a half and a partly new board that can be lobbied to say, you know what, this one part of this, before my permit runs out, I gotta make sure that that's changed, because I think that that's gonna have some really negative impacts, and then we could get into that. But I'd rather not leave it totally open. I just I just think we're, we're, we're further along than that.
So why don't we do this? Cause I'm not hearing anybody really disagree with that. And Lauren, you tell me if if any of this is unclear, that we're moving in a direction where we would require permit to be submitted or to be, uh, you'd have to submit for a permit sometime in the July timeframe. And that we would be, and that that permit would go until the end of twenty twenty-three, at which, at such time. These regulations, which right now may look like, uh, Community First Carbondale's proposal, would go into action. We can start that ordinance, and then we'll have our next discussion. We'll look at the the actual regulation a little more carefully and say, is this, is this what we want? Do we want to tweak this at all? But the general notion of submit for a permit by July that will last until the end of twenty twenty-three. And then new regulations will apply after that.
So question, so submit for a permit is one thing, but then receive a permit. So you are given a permit by what, the end of July? I mean, is that reasonable if they submit by?
We even have to know that July works to put a permit process in place for staff.
Good, good point.
So apply, then get it. What can you be ready to?
Absolutely.
We have a bunch of things that have been presented to the board, and obviously I'm the new kid on the block, and I don't have all the all the history, which is a good thing and a bad thing. But we've also been presented with at least three proposals for possible language for, for proposals for possible language for an ordinance. And a bunch of new information that I don't think regardless of all the community input and the the previous conversations, I don't really think the board has had the opportunity to compare and think about, you know, what would it mean to adopt this particular portion, even if it's only for a year or a year and a half. I would suggest that you put a timeline in place with the permits and then work out the exact language that you want to start with over the next, uh, I would say, one or two meetings.
Well, I I want to clarify something. I I don't think anybody, I I know we said we might tackle a little bit, but in general, the permit that would be issued in July or whenever, would essentially be, you can continue business as usual. Or are we talking about putting some more teeth in for that?
Say that one more time. I was just trying to catch you some notes here.
I agree with Lauren, and that's why, like, the more I think about it, the more I think that it's gonna be really difficult to come up with any kind of regulations for a permit by the summertime. So to me, I thought that, that what I was hearing was the permit that someone would get would essentially allow them to
So to me, I thought that that what I was hearing was the permit that someone would get would essentially allow them to continue business as usual. Until the end of twenty twenty-three, when the regulation goes in. So the only thing that we need to do before then is come up with what's. What goes in the permit application, and then even though we have a framework, we've got lots of time to think through the details.
We also need to think about staff's time and processing the permit applications. Remembering that by July, we're already starting to think about next budget year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just to clarify, I guess what Lauren was saying, though, is like, we are, we pretty much have within four proposals. Most of the questions and things we need to cat tackle, caps, no caps. Differs in different zone districts, doesn't differ. Um, ha- has X lodging tax associated to doesn't, right, like boom, 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 boom. Here are the things, so. I guess when, to me, if someone is going for a permit in July. Yes, their business as usual for the next year and a half. But they, I think by July, they need to know approximately a a bracket around, like. What their new permit's gonna look like, because then they're taking the next sixteen months. To. Figure out what compliance will look like.
I think we should strive for that.
Treat tweak it, but like, I don't want to take the sixteen months to be like. Oh, it's not gonna be me, so I don't want you guys to have to take sixteen months to. You know, be sitting there because that's someone who has a permit now. For a moving target.
Based on what criteria, really, yeah.
I don't mind tweaks, but I think the. Bulk of the substance should be there.
So so what I'm hearing is that the goal would be to have. The regulation for the the next phase of the permit ironed out by July, but there wouldn't be enforcement. Until twenty twenty-four effectively.
Right. But they lay the groundwork, so your permit expires at this date unless you meet these criteria. So you've got a year and a half to work that out, and then again, I mean, I think there's still time for the next board, right, to. Work out some of those details over time, but I think actually it would be a benefit to the community to have a. This is happening as of this date, unless we change it. But I think a default, putting a default in place is is powerful, uh, rather than putting nothing in place and leaving it to the next board to kind of go back through all this.
Hey, quite it to having a learner's permit, and then they're gonna get their driver's license a year and a half later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so let's, let's give it the old college try, we're gonna need another discussion to get there, and we'll see how, because I I agree with Lauren that. Now we wanna, like. Some of us have kind of done this, but let's, as a group, look at all the different things and and weigh them and decide which ones we all support and which ones we don't.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Part of that, also is gonna be, how is it gonna affect the already existing? STRs that might not meet those qualifications no matter what. And that, that's gonna be an important piece.
Yeah.
So depending on whether it's the LLC question, or whether it's the owner occupied question, or whether it's a zoning district or what have you.
That's a good point. Right, two like pieces of information I would like to request from staff for our next discussion are. A little insight to the bed and breakfast. License process, so we know. How that works and how viable that is for folks, um, if that's the alternative, if it's not in or occupied in a residential zone district. And a little bit of information on, um. How would we determine if a property is zoned, commercial or residential? I know that sounds easy on its face. But like, are these residences in the creamery that are, you know, is that zone commercial, every bit of it? There's mixed use zoning, I think what we're thinking is if it's paying commercial. Property tax. Then it's essentially a use by right, um. Would like to know more about.
Okay.
I don't think that's the case, how how the assessor handles it is totally different than zoning.
Okay.
And I already wrote down.
Okay.
Definition of B and B in the code, question mark?
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah, it's just something, if we're gonna draw this line that Kevin suggested that our code currently draws and says. Short term rentals are already allowed if you're in a commercial zone district, how easy would it be for staff and for. Owners and potential purchasers to determine, am I in a commercial zone district?
I hear a sneaky question.
Should be pretty easy.
The B and Bs, do they pay a sales tax on their room rentals?
Are you asking me that question?
I am, I don't know. Do you?
I I I think it's possible they just pay the lodging tax.
Yeah. I don't know.
On your staff list of questions, one of the other ones that I had for Mark was regarding deed restricted, deed restricted housing. So when this comes up about. Uh, STR on deed restricted, you know, what does that look like? How do you have to change that Colorado statute? Is that just? It's in there deed restricting and, you know, too bad, and you could only do it moving forward, or, so that was one that's like. To me, above my pay grade, and I believe he's still on, he's listening, so, cool.
And Lauren, just so you know, we contract with Garfield County Housing Authority to manage our deed restrictions, so they, I would hope they have the answer to that. Are they prohibited or not?
Yep.
So. Okay, how's that feel, Luis? Any? Any comments? I can't see your hand anymore, so.
No, Dan, nothing else from me.
Okay. All right. With Lauren on getting another agenda item on, um, to start diving into the details, I think we have a good framework. Thanks again, everybody for coming.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
What agenda item?
Three hours and twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, that probably sets a.